Well, good morning, everyone. I think we've got a few. Well, good morning, everyone. Welcome to the City Council Retreat for March 12, 2022. We're all kind of gathered here getting our last minute snacks. And the city clerk advised me that since we are being recorded and livestreamed, that we probably still need to use our mics when speaking, just to make it easier for everyone. So that would be great. So. Looks like we've got everybody here. Yep, very good. Well, thanks for all showing up today. It should be a good session. The city manager has prepared a lot of good detailed presentation today by folks that are going to give us an up-to-date insight into the issue of homelessness. And so, without further ado, I'll turn it over to Mr. Cottfield to give us our purpose. I thought we'd give the purpose, but we'll let Mr. Cottfield tell us what our purpose is.
Thank you, Mayor Whalen, and good morning, council. Again, I would like to echo the mayor's comments. This meeting is being broadcast virtually, so if you could utilize your microphones when you're speaking so that it can be captured for those who are watching this meeting either now or at a later time. You know, the city council's never had a standalone summit or discussion or retreat on the issue of homelessness. However, you have done quite a bit in that area as it relates to human services, housing, homelessness, and things along those lines. But this is really a first. I'd also like to suggest that, you know, the issue of homelessness, of course, is an epidemic that is, you know, found throughout the United States. And in terms of just managing expectations, I wouldn't see this as, you know, at the end of the day today, that you're going to somehow have solved homelessness. I think the objective today is for the council to hear some what's going on, not just in Lakewood, but in other areas of the county, in the region, and some partnering opportunities. And then to begin to have a discussion on some additional priorities that you might want to undertake as it relates to homelessness. And then what we can do is we can go back, research that, and then, of course, have some follow-up discussion and dialogue with you as part of future study sessions or regular meetings later on in this year. Just, you know, a quick overview of the agenda. We're going to kick off with, jump right into it with the city council with some discussion. And our Parson Recreation Director, Mary Dodsworth, is going to facilitate an exercise for you there. Next up, our Planning and Strategic Manager, Tiffany Spear, is going to essentially provide a primer or an overview as it relates to homelessness specifically in Lakewood. And then from there, a review again of all the city programs that the city has as it relates to human services, housing, and homeless prevention. And given the amount of work that we do there and the policies that the council and the programs that the council has put in place, we have several people here from our staff that can answer questions specific to those various programs if the council so desires. From there, we'll take a quick break. After that, we have several guests who will be joining your retreat this morning. And the commonality here is partnership opportunities. And, you know, what Miss Spear is going to be covering and others is programs that are already in place. Partnership opportunities are programs and proposals that are being evaluated for consideration and implementation, primarily at the county level or some of our local nonprofits. So these are new initiatives, and it's also perhaps an opportunity for this body to participate in those new initiatives. And Heather Moss, the Director of Human Services from Pierce County, will be here to talk about a couple of them. One is the county's Community First Village Proposal, as well as the county's Comprehensive Plan to End Homelessness, as well as to create a regional unified office to coordinate homelessness countywide. Duke Paulson, who is the CEO of the Tacoma Rescue Mission, and actually, the city has a longstanding relationship and partnership with them, will be here later this morning to talk about some of their new initiatives that they're thinking about pursuing. And then lastly, as a part of that, our Housing Manager, Jeff Gumm, will give a brief overview of what LASSA, right here in Lakewood, is looking at as it relates to new initiatives. And you heard from their Executive Director, Jan Hutchins, on that on Monday evening as well. From there, we have a very unique presentation from an individual named Andrew Dyke, who is with Econ Northwest. And this is a report or an assessment that was asked for by the Pierce County Council, and kind of the timing is just right. And it's a homeless services gap analysis. And we did include that in your packet. And so he'll be here later on this morning to do a walkthrough, talk-through on some of the key highlights on that. From there, we'll have lunch, working lunch, grab some food, and then back to the council in terms of an open discussion on, you know, again, what is it you would like to do? Or some ideas in terms of evaluating options and alternatives. And you can see there's a chart around here that focuses on prevention, diversion, and intervention. And, you know, Ms. Spear will be getting into that, but my suggestion would be perhaps to focus on that as it relates to policy considerations that this body might want to move forward on. Also in your packet, and solely for background information, are a wide range of policy documents that have been prepared by a number of jurisdictions here in the Puget Sound. And again, just information. You know, this is a subject matter that, you know, resonates across our region. And so we just wanted to share those with you. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Dodsworth, and so the floor is yours.
I think there, can you hear me? Usually you can, microphone. Is it on? Okay. Well, oh, there we go. I think that sounds good. Maybe up. Well, good morning. City manager asked me to kick this off with an activity. And what I thought would be great to do is to just do a quick exercise that kind of gets you in the mindset of the topic that we're talking about. I mean, homelessness is just such a big topic, and you're going to be hearing a lot of information today. And so I thought I would just kind of do a couple of exercises to get you in the mindset of this conversation and this situation and the people involved. You know, we deal a lot with the people involved. You're going to be dealing with policies, programs, services, opportunities. And so just to kind of get things going. So to start with, Ms. Walker's going to help me. So the thing we're going to just start with is, you know, here we have the idea of home sweet home. We hope you had a good night, hope you didn't have any trouble getting in here this morning. We have some nice coffee and treats. So, but when you think about home sweet home, just what are some words that come to mind or some feelings that come to mind? Or, so it's just, and everybody's, it's going to be, this is the interactive portion of the program. So, so just start speaking. We'd like to hear from everybody. So we'd like to hear from everybody. So just thoughts randomly. We don't have to go in order.
Family.
Family. Be a word or a phrase. Did you say snacks? Snacks. Oh, you wrote snacks. Good. Some other thoughts about home. I'm sure it brings up a lot of great. Neighbors. Work. Community. Anchor. Yeah. Well, it's a visual, too. You know, I mean, you know, solid, stable. Grounded.
Nostalgia.
Nostalgia. Memories? Great. Some good, some bad, but mostly good. I beg your pardon? Food. I'm sorry, what? I know. That's why she's writing. Looks pretty, too. Food. I think you just say your needs are met. Food always brings up, you know, what do we do with food, right? Maybe comfort, celebration, gathering. Togetherness. Yeah, I don't write a social. Shelter. Great. Oh, more green, favorite color. Some other thoughts about family, home sweet home? Pets. Comfort, safety, security? Any other thoughts? Sense of warmth and strength. That's great. Okay, so then, and I think that's what we strive for, what we hope for. And I would say a good majority of the folks have a sense of safety, home comfort, when they think of home sweet home. So then, you know, the topic today is homelessness. And a lot of times, this is what people think of when they think of homelessness. You know, we're not all experts. We don't work in this area. Maybe none of us have actually been homeless. And so I just put this as a visual for you to think about. But what are some of the thoughts that come to mind or words or phrases or concerns when you think of homelessness? And again, just sharing. Why? The story. It's going to be a good segue in a second. Dysfunction.
Yes, that I would say that homelessness is not a singular. Images. Looks different. The people that are serving it outside.
Yeah, different for different folks. Experiencing it as well as seeing it. Need for a variety of housing. Great. Hopelessness. Great word. Dependency. Sure.
Risk.
Risk. Mental health. Mental health and addiction. Compassion. Proud. Brave. Despair. Brave. Despair, abandon. Invisible. A lot of them feel invisible. Broken family. Broken relationships. Broken family. Broken's a great word. Well, we're going to do a quick little exercise. This is the big finale, and you guys are on top of it. So this is the Wheel of Homelessness. So, and I was talking with my daughter last night, and, you know, there's a fine line. We're not trying to make a game out of this and, you know, bring excitement to it. But what I wanted to do was to spin the wheel for each of you. And each of, and you have a little card in front of you. And so kind of like what I'd like you to do is sort of, you'll have a scenario or a character or a situation that you might just keep in front of you today. Because home sweet home is what we're hoping for, and this is what we're dealing with, the topics, and it's hard and it's scary and it's hopeless. But we've got all these opportunities. But it's really about how we take care of the people in our community. And so we're going to do this activity, and it may be something as you're thinking about the different programs, services, policies, opportunities, is that maybe you think about that person or that scenario, how that might be affected by some of the things that you do today. So we'll just go around in a circle, and we'll start with Councilmember Branstad, or you can spin the Wheel of Homelessness. He landed on "Lost Your Job." So your scenario could be that you lost your job, you ran out of unemployment benefits, you found employment, but it's a low-wage job, you don't have a great education, and you're having a hard time with housing. Sure. That's what the cards were for, if you choose to do it. That's yours. A death in the family. So you could have a partner that passed away. Maybe you're not married or you're not connected, so you don't have any of their benefits. They were the primary caregiver. Now, maybe it was a medical situation. You're behind and alone. Couch surfing. So you're a student, you're a senior in high school. Your parents are deployed. You've moved away. You don't want to leave your family, friends, and what you've worked at. And so you're couch surfing around the community, trying to just stay together until you can take that next step in life. Spin the wheel. Yours is a mental disorder. So you have some psychotic episodes. Most of them you don't remember. You might have had challenges with your job, lost some family situations. You don't really have health insurance, so you might not be able to have that balance of support. And so that has caused some housing disparity. Poverty. You grew up in poverty. You've had crisis for throughout most of your life. You haven't really had a stable household. And so you're now at a situation where you're on your own and trying to figure out how to survive in the world. That was a good spin. Thank you, Councilmember Anderson. Rent increase. So your wages haven't increased, but your rents have certainly gone up in the area, and you might be having trouble staying in the place in which you've lived for a period of time. You're also couch surfing. Did you want to do a new one? Okay. Someone got some couch surfing. Disabled. So you may have gotten in a car accident. You've become disabled, or maybe you've just been disabled your whole life. And you're over 25. You've lost a lot of the opportunities and services that have been provided to you. And so now you're trying to figure out how you can live off of this, maybe disability or the support that you have. So, so anyway, I just thank you for participating and going through this exercise. And again, we're going to be learning a lot today and listening to a lot of things. And of course, home sweet home is what we're hoping for. And those situations that have caused some of these activities are here. I'm just going to put these here so it's just something to glance at as you're thinking about things. But. I beg your pardon? No, that's perfect. Yeah, thank you. Anyway, so I just wanted to give everybody kind of a chance to sort of get into the groove. This is a really important topic. It's a heavy topic. There's lots of information, terms, and all kinds of things to learn. So just, I'm with you today in spirit, and I'm excited that you're talking about it. I think it's really important for our community and for the next generation. So that's my activity. Yeah.
I think probably differs from the. Well, thank you, I guess. Tiffany, we're on track, Ms. Spear?
Yes, good morning, everyone.
9:00 AM.
And good morning. Some of you I've never met in person yet, so I'm very happy to meet you in person. Before we get into the next section of the agenda, I just wanted to introduce myself a little bit more, especially to those who haven't worked with me in the past or haven't had a chance to work with you. I am someone who moved to the state of Washington from the state of Alaska. I was here for school and then stayed. But my career, for the most part, has been in housing. I had a law degree. I am an attorney. But I also have spent, as I said, most of my time working in government affairs and legislative work related to housing. So until about 2014, that's where I focused my time. Since then, I was, at one point, actually, the Program Manager for SSMCP. So again, related to housing and social services, how the presence of JBLM and the families and service members there interact with the city of Lakewood and the needs that they have off-base. And then I spent a little bit of time with Pierce County, and then came over to the city of Lakewood in 2018 and have been doing long-range and strategic planning essentially since. So some of this information for me is coming back to familiar territory, but the focus is not just on housing, but on homelessness itself. And they're all very entertied. And so it's hard to talk about one without the other on either end of the spectrum. Yeah, because it is a spectrum, and it is a very connected system. But one of the other things I wanted to do was just point out, and we'll refer to this many times today, and this is in your handouts. It's in the presentation you'll be seeing electronically. Essentially, you've got the issue of homelessness. So for whatever reason, individuals, families, whoever they may be, are in this pyramid, if you will, at some point. There is ways that they themselves and then third parties can react to that or anticipate it. First of all, prevention. So what is the mindset? What are the planning tools that people have? And then also, the city of Lakewood, in our instance, what can be done before someone ever has to actually physically be in the position of, I don't have a place to sleep tonight with a roof? So prevention, and we'll talk about this in much more detail, but that is where a lot of what Lakewood has done to this point has been. A lot of the programs, a lot of the funding, a lot of the decisions have been focused on prevention of homelessness. Diversion is when it's happening. So if someone is asking for help because they just found out rent's going up next month and their salary's not, and so how are they going to be able to handle that? Do they need to deal with medication versus rent? Or if they're in a house and they've just lost a second home wage earner, what's going to happen when the mortgage comes due? Intervention after it has happened. So think Behavioral Health Contact Team. Think you see somebody that needs to go to Aspen Court. You have people using the newly established, right here every Thursday, eviction prevention services for folks. Or they're already been evicted, and now what do they do? So there's a spectrum of ways that people themselves and then third parties, including local governments, are addressing and handling and reacting to homelessness. So we're going to try to focus much of today's discussion and then the ideas of what comes next around those three terms and around the idea of homelessness can be roughly broken down into these three subareas. So we'll keep talking about those three terms throughout the day. And then over here, for your reference, is, and I know it's big print for me, but it's small for you. This is a list of the different programs that the city currently has in place. So you'll see this electronically and in your packets. But there's funding for and identification of programs that have been around for a while. And then there's some brand-new ones. The 1% of the general fund that goes to human and social services. There's the Behavioral Health Contact Team through the police department. Mental Health Resource Coordinator, Veterans Treatment Court. The various programs that are funded through Community Development Block Grant Dollars. There's the Home Investment Partnerships Program. The Affordable Housing Sales Tax Credit Program, which was established by the council a few years ago. The Rental Housing Safety Program, which has been in place now for a few years. And then some newer ones funded either through the CARES Act in 2020 and then through the American Rescue Plan Act as we speak. So we'll talk about all these in a little more detail, but that's what's on this page. And then over here, you just have a summary of how the city has used its various dollars and resources toward these programs. At the bottom here, you'll see that, not including the ARPA funds, there's been, in the 2122 budget, 4.29 million allocated toward these various programs. And then depending on what happens today, this is the other thing, kind of jumping ahead to the far end. Are these what you like? Are they what you want to keep doing? Or do you take the lid off the issues and say, hey, maybe we need to come up with some new ideas, new ways to spend these funds? So think no-holds-barred. Think, yes, we have things in place right now, and maybe they're doing great. Maybe we want to continue them. Or maybe we want to explore some new opportunities. Maybe we want to look into a new way to focus effort and funding. With that, I'm going to start in with a presentation here. Actually, I should say, are there any questions as far as that goes?
Well, I think that hits on the central theme, at least in my mind, is, are we being effective with our resources today in either prevention, diversion, or intervention? That kind of depends a bit, obviously, on the data.
Right.
You know, how is homelessness exhibited currently in Lakewood? And if we've got all these existing programs and roughly 9% of the general funds spent on programs, are we as effective as we could be? Are we as leveraged with our partners as we should be? Those kinds of things.
Correct. And I'll just repeat again, you know this already, but I'm going to be a timekeeper and I'm going to be a, hey, use your mic person today. So if there happens to be discussion going on that, for those who are watching now or later can't hear, I'm going to try to do that. So please accept those friendly comments as we go through the day. Go ahead.
Yes, I would agree with the mayor that, while we have a laudable list of things we've invested in, that we typically don't invest in assessment when we make investments. And I think that that is going to be essential going forward if we want to be moving a needle on this other than just recognizing that the problem exists.
So I just happened to be on Facebook in the last week, and this popped up in my feed. It's an interesting graphic. It's actually somewhat of a survey or an assessment of homelessness in the city of London in the turn of the 20th century. And so just, first of all, obviously, the issue hasn't been a recent one for the world, but also that there's been these types of assessments and point-in-time counts, if you will, out in the world for a long time. So some of this should look very familiar. Some of the accounts, some of the descriptions are a little bit different. But it looks like what they were doing was looking not only for various levels of economic income. So you see semi-criminal to wealthy. And then you also see how people were classified in terms of being crowded or not crowded. So that's one thing that we really don't talk about very much in the homelessness discussions these days or subsidized housing. But also thinking about the quality of the shelter for this person or family, that's another issue to be thinking about. So we're going to get into a little bit of facts and figures to orient everyone to what's going on, not only in Lakewood, but the state of Washington. This is information that came from the Out of Reach Report for 2021, which is put out annually by the National Low Income Housing Coalition. And there's a lot of information on this slide, but I'm going to try to orient you to a couple of specific things. First of all, on the top, you'll see Washington has the seventh-most-expensive two-bedroom housing cost in the country. And then they go through, and I'll try to define things as we go today, but they go through an analysis of what is affordable for a household. And they do use that general rule of 30% of your income going toward housing. If that is the standard, you'll see that in order to have affordable housing in Washington State, the average statewide is that you would need to be making just over $29 an hour in order to hit that mark for a two-bedroom apartment. Down at the bottom, you'll see circled in the Tacoma area, it's just slightly lower than that, so $28.10. What does that translate into for Pierce County? Again, so the hourly wage is about. Um, again, so the, the hourly wage is about $28.10. And then if you jump over to the circled number on the right, you'll see an estimated hourly mean renter wage in Pierce County is 1698. And so what does that turn into? That far right circle, someone would need, in theory, 1.7 jobs in order to have an affordable two-bedroom apartment in Pierce County. So how many people out there working retail in particular are making $28.10 an hour and therefore have the ability to have, to pay for, uh, no more than 30% of their wages going toward housing? And that, that's separate and apart from the cost of the housing. This is just wages. We're talking about it just, uh, for the moment. I always call this the alligator mouth. And this is something that's nothing new, but it continues to accelerate, especially in our area of the country right now. The blue line on the top are, uh, changes over time to, uh, home prices. So we're talking ownership here for a moment. The green line along the bottom is median household income. This covers the years 20, or I'm sorry, 2000 through 2020. Uh, and what I would say, a couple of things. Household generally is, uh, for people. You've got one or two wage earners. And median, the term median means that half of the, either house prices or half of the wages are above that number and half of them are below. So it's not even really an average. It is just, if you were to take a look at the list of housing prices, half of them are above a number X, half are below. Same goes for wages. And obviously, what you're seeing here is that, uh, housing prices are increasing annually faster than, uh, wages are. So even if you felt relatively comfortable in the year 2000, fast forward to 2020, things aren't so comfortable. When you compare the, the price of a home versus, uh, the, uh, wages that you may be bringing in. You see across the top, it's about a 3.4 time increase faster for home prices than it is for wages. Bringing that into, uh, Pierce County specifically, you see, uh, this is recent information coming from the Pierce County Housing Needs Assessment that is being used in relation to their development of a housing action strategy right now. So this information is, is pretty recent. It was published earlier this year by BURK. What you'll see on the right-hand side is a graph that shows whether they are, quote, um, severely, moderately, or not cost burdened. The ones that are the most cost burden, that's the orange bars. The dark blue is the least. And so what you see is the average overall is 14% are severely cost burdened, 19 are moderately. But if you jump down below area median income, for instance, the extremely low income, this is 0 to 30% of area median income. 66% of them are severely cost burdened. And this shouldn't be a surprise, but just to let you know, uh, if you look at the top bar again, adding those two together, a third of all households, regardless of income, regardless of where they are in the county, are either severely or moderately cost burdened regarding housing. Part of that is due to, um, availability of units. And I wish I could have found a, a graphic of Father Sarducci, those of you who remember him. But, um, one of my favorite things he ever did was talk about what he learned in his economy class, which is supply and demand. That's the answer, right? That's your economy class. So it's two things. It's how much supply is there, but it's also how much demand is there. And here in Pierce County, Puget Sound, Washington State, not only is there an increase in, uh, demand because we have people moving here, people being born, but there's also, um, not enough supply to begin with. And so those two together are just exacerbating the issue for everyone. You'll see here, you've got for those at the lowest economic, uh, strata, that there's a shortage of about 12,000 units as it stands. And then between the 30 and 50, it's another shortage of about 4,000 units. This, to me, is very, uh, interesting. I couldn't tell you exactly why this has happened over time. But since 2012, you can see the drop in just the number of homes available on the market for sale. It's not just COVID. This has started, um, at least here, this is back to 2012. But you had, um, recovery from the 08 recession. Things seem to be going okay, but then the supply just continues to drop. And so again, not only are prices going up because of land, there's only so much of it because of, uh, supply, not keeping up with people moving here or being born, needing to expand households, but you just have less, um, houses on the market anyway. So there's a lack of, uh, available houses being built as well. Under production, about 13,666 between 2010 and 2020 in Pierce County. Number of houses that were not built, that demand could have certainly supported. So when we're taking a look at this point, um, you see here that between 2010 and 2021, about a 31% increase in incomes, whereas rents went up 67% and home values went up 96%. So again, it's, even if you have a job and you feel like you're doing everything right, housing prices are going up, whether it's rent or mortgage, much faster than your salary or your, or hourly wages. Just very quickly, this is information from the federal level about those that are receiving low income assistance for their rent. There are three out of four of the people that would qualify for federal assistance not getting it. Um, and that is, uh, in part because, uh, the federal government doesn't have any money or does not have enough funding going into these programs. But it's also, that's not getting any better, even in light of what's happened with, um, ARPA and CARES and other, uh, funding assistance programs. So even those who, in theory, would be getting this assistance, three quarters of them are not. Great graphic in my personal opinion. This is the dominoes that I always have in my own mind, but you've got housing prices and the incomes are rising slower than that. So you just saw that trend over time from a couple of different sources. And so people who would be buying perhaps, they don't have the ability to buy, and so they are renting instead. What does that do? That means there's too many renters for the number of rental units. And so again, Father Sarducci, you've got, uh, lower income rent, um, renters being pushed out of the rental units whose prices are going up because there's only so many, uh, units available. And those renters that are toward the bottom of the, of the heap ultimately are starting to be pushed into homelessness. So whereas the council, as you were talking about this during the little, um, session with Mary Dodsworth, talking about all the reasons you may think of for causes of homelessness in the back of your mind, and everybody's got a different list. It's important to keep in mind, it's not just the drugs, it's not just the mental health disorders or, or family dynamics. It's also just the cold, hard financial facts that salaries are not keeping up with either rent or mortgage. Jumping into Lakewood statistics, some of this you know, but just to reorient us all here as well. The city is only 21 years old now. It's the second largest city in the county. Right now, we've got an estimated population of about 63,600. Close to Joint Base Lewis McCord, Western State Hospital, Fort Silicon Park, Summerfest, two colleges, Pierce Transit, and the Sounder Station. What you'll see below, a little more applicable to today, though, is some demographic data. You'll see that there's quite a diverse population, uh, with white alone. At this point, this is slightly out, out of date information. If you recall, the 2020 census has made the, um, conclusion that Lakewood is one of the few cities in the state now that are actually more people of color than white alone. So it's actually 54%, I believe, people of color now. The housing units, about 28,000 owner occupied versus renter occupied. Um, this, this number is a little bit off from what you hear elsewhere, which is about 40% are owners and 60% are renters in the city, which is flipped from what the general statistic is. And some of that could be explained by the proximity to JBLM. You have people coming and going. It's also the existing housing stock that predates incorporation for the city. We have, um, a number of reasons why that is, but it is the status quo in the city as of now. Employment, number of things, uh, that you see here, uh, construction, manufacturing, retail, finance, and then services. One reason why the services is so high is that includes, uh, public employment. So not only the city, but you've got, again, Western State Hospital, you have the Clover Park School District. You have a number of other, um, agencies here in the city, and that's why that number is, is higher than you may find in other jurisdictions. The chart in green, you'll just see over time the shift a little bit in, um, the number of people employed in these various areas. So between 2001, 2018, things shifted a bit. You had an increase again in administration. Part of that would be the moving in of DSHS right next door. And you'll see over time as well, some changes, some drops, for instance, in finance, insurance, and real estate. Increases in healthcare, again, related to the various, uh, the hospital, Western State Hospital, other, uh, health-related, employers here in the city because of those larger agencies being here. So turning to poverty, turning to, um, the population that you may see in homeless situations. The pie chart shows five different categories, but I summarize those right in the middle. Essentially, under 18 years, so children, are 48% of those in poverty in the city. Overall, the city's population at 16.6% are, uh, considered in poverty, but 48% of them are under 18. Over 65 are seniors. It's 32% of the population, I'm sorry, it's 32% of that 16% is how I should have said that. And then between 18 and 64, out of that 9,793 people, 20% of them are in poverty. And then if you look over on the left side, those who are in poverty is about 97.9, but half of them are about 4,500 are actually at the 50% of poverty rate. So again, that extremely low income is a considerable number of people here in the city. This should not be, um, an unfamiliar chart. You've seen this now for a couple of different reasons, but this is the Washington Environmental Health Disparities Map. And highlighted in the larger map on the left are, uh, Tillicum, Woodbrook, Springbrook, and Lakeview. Those are all census tracts identified at the highest levels of, uh, socioeconomic factors lending themselves to this map, including things like poverty and then other issues that are, they call it environmental, but this is not, this is not just birds and bees and, uh, the ground. This is, uh, all kinds of factors fall into that term environmental. And so again, this is nothing new, I don't think, for the council, but just reemphasizing that there are certain pockets of the city where a lot of this is concentrated. Please.
Question back on the prior slide. You know, we've all known that Lakewood has a higher percentage of, uh, the population of poverty than the county, for instance. And relative to the state of Washington, a fairly significant percentage. The interesting question would be historically, why is that? Is it because we had a lot of low-income housing or dilapidated housing around the base for years? And that's what, uh, drew folks with limited means to this area? Do we know historically why we're in the situation we're in?
Guess I would turn, Mr. Brewer, our institutional memory will be here shortly.
It can't just be happenstance, right?
Correct, correct.
Yeah, go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, the, the question I'd have on that is, do, can, can that be tracked to the housing mix in other communities, whether they're similarly situated or not? Obviously, if you have an area that's 80, 90% owner occupied, you are not going to have those numbers. So it's a chicken and the egg thing. But, uh, given Lakewood's mix since the 60s, when there was boom of apartment building, my guess would be that it's the quality of the housing that attracts lower income folks because it's affordable, uh, as opposed the other way around.
So Mr. Brewer has all the answers.
Well, I was about ready to eat a donut, so I didn't hear the whole question. Would you mind repeating, Mayor?
Sure. No, I think the, the interesting question, as we kind of dig into this, is the why. We know that factually, we have a higher percentage of our population in poverty than does the county. And relative to communities around the state, we have a pretty significant percentage of folks here in Lakewood in poverty, as is fine by the stats. The historic question is why?
Um, this, this is my perspective. Uh, a part of it was, I believe that at one time Lakewood did house a larger percentage of military individuals, and so therefore there were more apartment complexes that were built. And then in the early 90s, there was a massive, uh, round of apartment complexes built, uh, in the Lakewood community. Wasn't really a city at that time, but it was in the thousands, and there was a big outcry over the number of units that was constructed. Um, that was one of the things that I believe brought forward, uh, one of the ideas of incorporation among others. Uh, but this community has had a significantly larger pa, uh, percentage of apartment construction over the years. Um, and so I think that's part of the reason. And then these apartments, some of which are older, um, then become, uh, available for low-income people. And then that's why, you know, the council in previous years took a look at Rental Housing Safety Program to main sure, maintain or improve the maintenance of these facilities. But if, if I look at it from my perspective of being here, I, I think those are some of the underlying reasons. And if you, if you take a look at the number of apartment units in Lakewood versus other parts of Pierce County, we have had historically higher numbers and we look more like a King County city when you start taking a look at housing versus, uh, a Pierce County city.
Well, yeah, we'll date you. And then the interesting correlation is, does a community that has more apartments lend itself to?
I, I don't know if I can answer that question.
Poverty issues, you know, who knows, right? But there, there are concerns in the community about our work on enhancing apartments in Lakewood, so. Interesting. Mr. Gumm?
Uh, one thing I, I noticed, uh, Councilmember Anderson may have kind of hit, uh, a point that I've seen when I go out and do stuff with CDPG, the, the three neighborhoods that are, are targeted. I mean, you're looking at Woodbrook, Tillicum, and, and Lakeview. Those tend to have smaller homes. They were built pre-60s. Um, they, they are populated by a large low-income population. They have been historically. They tend to be elderly. A lot of those households are ones that we serve with CDPG, so, um, they were able to get into those houses in 10, 15, 20 years ago for $50,000 to $80,000. So they tend to be smaller houses, single-story, 1,200 to maybe 1,500 max. They're, they're smaller houses that are, are pre-60s, so that I am seeing a lot of that in those. Seeing that slide of those three neighborhoods is, it's a telling tale.
There was recently an eviction study, um, done by the University of Washington for, I want to say Washington State, but it might have been for, uh, a regional body. But what this is showing is that Pierce Benton and Cowlets Counties have the highest risk of eviction in the state. And then again, coming into Lakewood a little more closely on the right, no surprise, Tillicum, Woodbrook, Springbrook, and then Montevista on their east side of the city are the highest risks of eviction within the city of Lakewood. So continuing to show, um, that those are the areas where people are most at risk of entering homelessness.
Yeah, yeah. Ms. Beer?
Yes.
I, I guess then I'm struggling with the difference between higher risk of eviction and actually being evicted. In other, in, in other words, risk of eviction is based on some analysis of data in neighborhoods, but doesn't seem to be include actual evictions. It's... Or, or does it? I mean, what's the definition of a relative risk of eviction as opposed to data about people actually being evicted?
This is coming again from this study, and so the, the link is there if the city council wants to go to it. But essentially, they call it housing precarity, P-E-R-C-A-R-I-T-Y. And what they're talking about is not only because prices are going up and landlords are wanting to increase rent as a result, just in the area, prices are increasing, rent is increasing. So there may be those that can afford their current rent, but can't afford the future rent. And it's also opportunity for redevelopment, so their units may be, um, being demolished altogether for redevelopment. So there's a couple of just different elements that go into that term precarity. And based on that information and what's happening in these various areas of the city, that's, that's the conclusion that they came to, was those four areas within the city. Whether or not they are actually right now being evicted, not everyone that's identified at risk has been evicted yet. It's looking at historical patterns coupled with that. It's looking at historical patterns coupled with that idea that these areas are likely to get redeveloped. And they're also looking at what the rents are versus what the overall rent for the city or the county is. And these are lower than those averages.
So in our planning, one of the things that is, is a core of our planning has been, we have been trying to promote redevelopment of underutilized properties, increased density, being able to go and do that. And so by your explanation, you know, you know, our policies to, in terms of, of community development, seem to have factors in them that increase the risk of eviction. And I know when we did the Station District Subarea Plan, you know, there was a lot talked about, about how do we not displace the people that, that, that live there? But that it was more done as a, it'd be nice conversation than anything that was actually put in the plan that would preclude that because the main focus of the plan was to get newer multifamily housing with, at a greater density than is there. And the reality of building houses, particularly if it is housing that is being built by the private sector, is you're going to get newer housing that, um, just from a cost recovery model is going to require higher rents than, um, what, what they're replacing in the Station District. It's mostly replacing single-family homes that are of the model that Mr. Gumm spoke us about, that are very small, have maybe been in, in, in a single family's ownership for a long time or are in the very low rental model with acceptable, but perhaps marginal membership, um, quality to them, they meet rental housing safety standards. But a new set of townhomes or apartments is going to greatly exceed that and is going to, um, by, by nature attract. But it's not necessarily going to lead to massive evictions because we're building thirty units where before there were six. And so the, the fact that maybe six folks will, will move. And that, that doesn't necessarily mean that they move by virtue of eviction. Some of those that are going to be done by the current homeowner is sold, sold a home. So, you know, that, that's not an eviction. But in other cases, a rental unit is sold to a developer and someone moves. I think we've seen evictions more prominently that we can actually visualize in the area on, uh, where, where we built some new motels. And there, where there were formerly mobile home parks. And they went through the year-long mandatory relocation process that is essentially an eviction, um, process to do that. But, um, I, I think that, you know, we should not kid ourselves that we are not part of the, that our long-range community development plan doesn't necessitate some replacement of low, low-income rental properties with, with higher quality, more dense things to be able to meet expected population growth.
And I would, oh, I'm sorry.
Well, I, I hope as we go through here today, we recognize that there are two distinct issues and there's some degree of overlap and you can debate that. One dis, one distinct issue is an arithmetic problem. That is the lack of availability of affordable housing or housing in general. That's the number of units and how much they cost a month. Another one is homelessness, which is a very multifaceted problem. Those overlap, I would advance that they don't overlap as much as many advocates seem to indicate. I've not ever seen any empirical data which indicates you can build your way out of homelessness. It's more of a treatment issue. All sorts of different social programs that can help those folks. In Seattle County, now they're spending about a hundred thousand dollars a year a homeless household. If you could build your way out of it. The industry takes a, a big slice of that. You know, you, you look at housing choice vouchers, VASH vouchers, it's about fifteen thousand dollars a year, a household. That's a lot better deal, actually pay for people to go into housing. But there's a bigger problem. And so when we're looking at it, I hope we focus today on, we're not the primary social service provider in, in the federal, state, county, municipal system. We can look for gaps, we can look for places where we can help out that are specific to our, our community. The money comes with strings on it, how we can manipulate, that's another que, issue. But I would like to focus today on the greater problem. Where are, where in our community can we help? We're, we're not going to build apartment complexes. We're not going to have a housing choice, Section eight VASH voucher program where we pay millions of dollars a year to house people out of city money. But we may be able to find help for people in categories. And then how we prioritize that is another issue. When you triage, do you do it by the most deserving, the most desperate, the most cooperative? Well, that isn't the person you see on the street. They're probably the least deserving, the most desperate and the least cooperative people. And they have a bigger problem. So socially, where do we make the decision compared to the, the sixteen-year-old who is the most deserving, most desperate, most cooperative? When his father kicks him out because of his sexual orientation, he has nowhere to go. So how do you balance those? But that's, it's not our zoning. It's not our tax incentive program of housing that's going to significantly address this. It's how we can focus on getting resources to help people to change their lives. So that's my two cents.
One thing I would mention that is not unique to, to Lakewood is this issue of redevelopment versus maintenance of affordable housing. Certainly, there are areas in the county and the state where similar issues have popped up, where a prime piece of real estate for redevelopment also happens to be where the most affordable housing is located. And how do you move forward with increasing the, the overall economic engine within a particular area without turning around and having the eviction issues that Councilmember Bran Sutter was just mentioning? That's not unique to Lakewood, it's certainly here. But that is something that is being gravelled with at all levels is this anti-displacement idea, keeping people in affordable housing. I won't say versus, but while also trying to address and, and improve a city's overall economic outlook and new housing stock coming in, et cetera, et cetera. There's only so much acreage, and so how do you best use that for people and for business? Jumping to the point in time count. So again, that question of how big is the problem for homeless-specific populations in the city of Lakewood? This is historical numbers countywide from the years two thousand and ten through two thousand and fifteen. It's a somewhat confusing slide because the green line on the top is adding together the other two lines. So it's not three different sets of data. It's the green on the bottom plus the blue in the middle equals the bright green on the top. But long story short, if you watch over time, the number is slight going down by the year two thousand and fifteen, whether that is due to increased housing stock or some other issues, I couldn't tell you, but that's just the historical trend. More recent information, this is showing you not only the county numbers, but then the Lakewood-specific numbers on the right. And what you have, there are, are both sheltered and unsheltered counts. Down below the chart, you'll see sheltered equals they are in emergency or transitional housing. And then unsheltered individuals are sleeping outside or living in places not meant for human habitation. And if you look at the years two thousand and sixteen through two thousand and twenty, the numbers in the city of Lakewood are roughly holding at about a hundred sheltered and then fifty or so unsheltered. The years two thousand and twenty-one and twenty-two, twenty-one was affected by COVID. And so there was actually a year where when they went out to do their overnight count, they did not do unsheltered numbers because of the concerns regarding both the people doing the counts and the people that were homeless. So they did not do unsheltered counts. This year, we just don't have the numbers yet. The point in time count was conducted in late January and they just haven't been published yet. But what you see there is a slow uptick. Twenty sixteen were higher numbers sheltered than unsheltered. I'm sorry, sheltered in twenty sixteen were higher than the following years for the county. But again, in, in Lakewood, it's roughly been about a hundred people sheltered and then about fifty unsheltered. I'm going to jump to some information that's coming from the Clover Park School District. They also do their own count regarding students experiencing homelessness or in foster care. You'll see these numbers are from the years sixteen, seventeen school year through twenty-one, twenty-two. And there was a drop in two thousand and twenty-one and twenty-one, twenty-two. This is how they were sheltered or unsheltered. And again, you'll see some definitions at the bottom of the slide which are similar. Shelters are emergency or transitional. Unsheltered is living in a place not meant to be used as a nighttime resident. And then you have also the doubled up, the hotel motel and the foster care numbers. Doubled up is by far the highest number there. And what you'll see that is sharing or couch surfing housing due to loss of housing economic hardship or similar reason. What you see down along the bottom here are the various reasons students cited for losing their housing. Domestic violence, drug and alcohol, evictions and barriers, a family crisis, foreclosure, fire, other disaster, incarceration, job loss, running away or being kicked out, environmental issues or medical and health bills. The big ones, as you can see on the chart, evictions, family crises and job loss are, are the biggest reasons why students are saying that they are losing their housing. This is a couple of the partners along the bottom there that the school district currently works with. And I just wanted to include them because they may be organizations, if the city doesn't already have a, a good, strong relationship with, just something to put in the back of your mind, some of these organizations may be ones that the city would like to either expand or create relationships with related to homelessness issues. As of March of this year, some of this information will come out again as part of the results from the two thousand and twenty-two point in time count. But this is a slightly different flavor or a slightly different color of the animal. And so I'll just spend a minute here explaining the numbers. The top bars are showing you the number of homeless people sleeping in Lakewood now. And then when they were asked where they lived before becoming homeless, sixty-seven percent of that hundred and ninety-one said that they were living in Lakewood prior to being homeless. The second chart, a little bit different. Did you live in Lakewood before becoming homeless? They had two hundred and fifty-six responses, yes. But then there's three separate questions that followed. Where are you living now? About half of them are sheltered in Tacoma. Thirty-five percent of them still are in Lakewood out of that two hundred and fifty-six. And then twenty-three percent or sixty of them answered that they're in an emergency shelter somewhere else within the county. So again, out of those that said they lived in Lakewood before homeless, they were about two-thirds of those sleeping in Lakewood now, hundred and ninety-one. Whether they were sheltered right now in Tacoma, Lakewood or somewhere else, two hundred and fifty-six were saying that they lived in Lakewood before becoming homeless. So we'll get the point in time count results here, I think by the end of the month. But this is the information that came out of the Homeless Management Information System data at the beginning of March.
It's my understanding that that data doesn't distinguish between people who were in some type of institutional care and people who weren't. So that if somebody's released from Greater Lakes or Western State and they're asked, when they show up at the rescue mission, it's just, I was in Lakewood at nine-eight-four-nine-nine. It doesn't say whether they were coming out of state care.
Yeah, I believe that's correct, yeah.
Yeah, thanks. Miss Brewer, another couple of questions on the data. So I did the point in time count exercises a couple of years ago, and I'm recalling some of the questions. So looking at the chart on our page twenty-eight, the March three, twenty-two data. Does the data dig deeper and ask these hundred and twenty-eight or hundred and ninety-one individuals why they're currently homeless and for how long they've been homeless? Because that would be helpful information, right? To know whether we're missing the boat on prevention or intervention. Because some of them are chronic and some of them are newly homeless because of horrible circumstance like you saw in the last couple of pages. Eviction issues, job losses, domestic violence, those kinds of things.
Yeah, I don't have that information today, but we will have Heather Moss here later this morning. Hopefully she can maybe answer that question or we'll follow up.
Do we know if this, if the point in time count data collected that kind of information?
From my data, I, I don't believe the point in time count has anything accurate in that regard. And there's a coordinated entry system that human service grant recipients are required to use and report. That's where the basic data comes from. But I don't know how far in depth it is and whether, whether, how far in depth it goes or whether that's actually compiled on a greater basis and actually used for anything. That has been a problem with the system, which is people are required to do X, but then the, the data isn't actually used for anything.
Yeah, it'd be helpful to know that, the why and how long.
This is even more recent data. This is the week of March seventh, those that entered into or left the coordinated entry system. And what you see down at the bottom is for the week of February twenty-eighth through March sixth, there were two hundred and seven people new to homelessness. And that's countywide, this is not Lakewood-specific. And then you'll see that out of that two hundred and seven, I, I'm sorry, the number that you'd see for shelter exits, that's not out of that pool of two hundred and seven. It may be some of those people, but it may be a completely different crowd who left shelter in the last seven days was about a hundred and fifty-two. And out of that hundred and fifty-two, a hundred and thirty-two either returned to homelessness or the county just does not know where they went. The others are listed as going to permanent housing, temporary housing or hospital treatment or prison. So they track this information on a weekly basis. There may be some additional data that we could request on behalf of Lakewood from the county's Human Services Department. But this is just the information again over that week of February twenty-eighth through March sixth. So we're going to transition to briefly talk about programs I know you're all familiar with. You talk about it on a regular basis as well as during the budget process. And we're coming back to our pyramid. So prevention, diversion and intervention. Most of the city's programs historically have focused on prevention, which the city should be very proud of because what that is doing is trying to prevent those people from having to go through this experience at all. But then there's also been programs for diversion and intervention in place and have been beefed up in recent years. So I'm going to turn to a couple of our better subject matter experts on these things to come and talk briefly about the programs that are listed here and on the next slide that you currently have in place in order to address either prevention, diversion or intervention. So Mary Dodds, if you wouldn't mind. And then we'll have the chief and also Jeff Gumm come up.
Good morning. Just briefly, human services has, or the city of Lakewood has dedicated one percent of their general fund towards human services since just about the time of incorporation, which has been pretty amazing and consistent for our community partners. Council regularly, every year or two years, talks about the strategies and the way of how they can utilize those resources in a variety of ways. The primary, or the majority of the resources we utilize do fall under that prevention safety net, even though a little bit of it does deal with the other two categories. But currently, right now, we have programs that provide emotional support. We do spend a good deal of resource in food. We support health and behavioral health services, a little bit of housing and then stabilization, which is one of those categories that really helps people prevent homelessness. And the way that we currently do it right now is we sort of throw the net out and, and talk to our partners and let people apply for what they think is most important based on, you know, they're the experts and what they see as being the need for the next two years. And so, but traditionally, if we look back, even though that's the method that we use, we really have consistently supported a, a large group of regular partners. Our go-to folks that are doing great work, have great capacity to provide service, have good ability to manage their contracts and their data and their outcomes and they're stable in our community. Places like communities and schools, Greater Lakes Mental Health, Clover Park School District, things like that. And then new programs come and go as well based on need, trend, et cetera. But we do have a good base of support here in the city of Lakewood that provides great services to our community. And as Ms. Beer said, it does provide that safety net that helps us have maybe larger homeless numbers than we might see in some of the other communities. Any questions?
Thank you. Yeah. Chief.
Thank you, Mayor Wayne and council members. Just going to talk briefly today about a behavioral health contact team and the role that they've played in homelessness prevention, I'll say, and getting people connected with housing. As a reminder, the, the behavioral health contact team was started back in 2015. The goal wasn't expressly to help with homelessness. The goal of the team was to reduce those instances where somebody experiencing a crisis or a mental break had encounters with law enforcement. And subsequent to that, doing follow-ups and making sure that they were stable, connected with resources and receiving the treatment they, that they needed. The, the sort of the secondary benefit of that did impact the, the prevention part of homelessness. Because if you think about somebody in their apartment with neighbors and everybody else and they're, they're creating either conflict with their neighbors or generating police calls for service repeatedly, that is going to lead to eviction. And we have had occasion where the behavioral health contact team has worked over the years with people who, you know, suffer from mental illness are sort of at odds with their landlords. And they've worked to sort of mediate those situations and ensure that the people are, you know, at least connected with some services to increase their odds of being able to stay in those, in their homes. More recently, with the opening of the Aspen Court, our behavioral health contact team was the, sort of our point on contacting people in the community that we knew were homeless. That, and again, looking at people that are already homeless and they're the, the visible homeless that we all see or saw. And they were able to connect 12 people to rooms at the Aspen Court and essentially filling all the, the rooms that Lakewood had available to them. That was, you know, with some of those people were folks that we had worked on for years to try and get connected with services and they finally, I guess, wore down and agreed when we presented them with the option of the Aspen Court. One thing I would remind you when we talk about this is that services like those are voluntary. We cannot go to a homeless person and make them go to a place like the Aspen Court just because they're homeless. Us, you know, involuntarily taking somebody is a very high threshold. When it's, you know, they're either gravely disabled or an immediate threat to themselves or somebody else. That is a high bar. A lot of the people that we see that are, are visible homeless don't meet that threshold. Conversely, though, they are also, a lot of them struggle to be able to make the best decisions for themselves. But we can only do so much. And a lot of times it does take years of convincing and coaxing in order to get them into treatment. And that's what we saw when we had the 12 beds at the Aspen Court and our behavioral health contact team went. And one of them, we all know that used to be over by the ram. He finally agreed and everybody was like shocked because nobody thought he would. But we got him over to Aspen Court and he's still housed there. So a lot of times it's just, you know, years of persistence in working on them. But that's been our behavioral health contact team's focus. We've recently added a second person under contract from Greater Lakes who is, I think, more focused on the navigation part of it and connecting people with PATH, the housing group at Greater Lakes. So that's the, the other benefit of the behavioral health contact team. We have that contract and that partnership there. And they have people that are dedicated specifically to housing for people with mental illness. So be happy to answer any questions about that.
Mr. Branson?
Yeah, chief, I know back in 2015 to 2017 that one of the assessments in the early years of the team was we sort of had a target group of people that had been repetitive responses. And we were looking at trying to decrease that to where they were no longer on that list. And there were a number of years where you reported data to us about the number of people that have come off that list and how it was shrinking. But in the past three years or so, that hasn't been data that you've been reporting to us. And so I guess is there, is that still a, a metric that you and the contact team is focused at? Or is there another metric maybe brought on by COVID situations that recognizes the needle you're trying to move with that team?
Well, the, that metric is still out there. You know, when we started, we had a larger group of people that, you know, fell under that category. As the program became successful, we definitely, we definitely whittled that list down. And now it's sort of a, you know, people come off and people get added on and then come off and get added on. As soon as somebody pops up as generating multiple calls for service, the behavioral health contact team will get involved and try and, and see what they can do to mitigate that. The other, so I have not reported out on that and I can, I don't know that there would be, we don't have like our top 10 like we did when we first started. But I can certainly look and see if we do have that measurable for the people that come on and fall off. The other thing over the past, you know, few years, the, while that was the initial focus of that team, it really has morphed into a focus on homelessness. Because that's where, seems to be more where I guess the service is needed and where they, they serve the best purpose. There, there was that, you know, obviously an overlap between mental illness and homelessness. That that's just where the work took them. It wasn't with any, you know, explicit direction from me or anybody else. That's just, like I said, where the work took them. So over the past few years, that might be why you're not seeing those, some of those, or why I haven't been focusing on some of those same metrics is because their work has sort of shifted.
Yeah, I guess that I, that I would be interested in how you and the department leadership is evaluating the effectiveness of that team. You know, clearly in the past budget cycle, you requested and we responded by adding some dollars to add another Greater Lakes Mental Health resource to, to the team. But you know, we'd, we'd kind of like to get some data that says, what difference has that made? Okay, is, you know, at a level other than anecdotal.
So I, I have a couple of questions on this. So the, the interesting thing about this discussion and then Mr. Anderson kind of hit it on the head for me. It's not so much about the lack of housing per se. It's also the issue with those that are unhoused or unhoused for a reason, much of which anecdotally is due to either mental health. Not all, some mental health or addiction, drug addiction. So what is the behavioral health contact team finding on the street with regard to? And we've talked about mental health issues because they're from Greater Lakes. But what about the addiction issue? Is that part and parcel to what they're experiencing, what they're seeing? And how do they refer those folks in need to treatment?
It's, a lot of those are co-occurring. And I know that we talked about some of the economic factors, but quite frankly, I would say, you know, anecdotally, over 90% of the people that we deal with and our behavioral contact team deal with, it is drug or substance use disorders or mental illness and a lot of times both. And there's, there's one that, that could lead to the other and often does. They just start with referrals to Greater Lakes. I mean, that, it's, that's where, and they try to assess each person individually. Because that's another premise we all have to operate under is that every person, Carolyn Seer put it great, our MHP, every person is their own project. Every person has their own unique traumas and reasons for being homeless. And you have to focus on those persons as an individual. And that's what our, our behavioral health contact team tries to do. Sometimes that's just referral to Greater Lakes. There are some substance use places that, disorder, treatment places that they can refer to. But in large part, it is, you know, it's, it's what do you address first?
Right. And. So we can't involuntarily commit, right?
Correct.
So how successful has our prodding and nudging been?
Well, we've, we filled 12 beds. I mean, that's, or 12 rooms.
Right.
That's, that took years of prodding. Sometimes it is just a matter of, you know, we try to get them into treatment. And I don't want to use the word harassment, but it's, you know, repeated attempts to where they get sick of hearing it and they, they move on to somewhere else. And then we focus on the next person. It's, you know, I, I don't know that I have a, a good measurable to point to for the success of referrals for, for treatment.
Here's my, here's my follow-up question because you said, you know, recently we've been relatively successful in filling those 12 beds. And my question is, what happens in a year or a year and a half when the 12 beds available to Lakewood and Aspen Court go away? What do we do?
Yeah, I, and that's, you know, the need will still be there for those beds. I don't know what happens to the people that are in them. I think the intent is for them to transition to some sort of longer term housing.
Our capacity that I'm concerned about, our capacity to do exactly what you've described, which is to have a place dedicated for us to take folks for the emergency situation to get evaluated, referred to treatment, that kind of thing.
Right. That, I mean, there will always be a need for that. Those, you know, right now with the 12 beds full, we don't really have another option for that.
Right.
But the other, what I would ask you to focus on too is, is whatever solution that is that you want recognize or, or focus on it as a regional thing. Because it, I mean, we, we are surrounded by other jurisdictions and populations and there is no just Lakewood solution. We even saw that when Aspen Court opened, our, and word got out about it. Our behavioral health contact team was getting phone calls from as far away as Lacey from people looking for, for some sort of housing. So when we, whatever solution we identify, it's going to attract people in need of a solution. So that's the regional part of it. But as far as the capacity goes, when there will always be a need, the need is there now because we filled our 12 beds.
Got it. Mr. Anderson, you had a point.
And chief, you mentioned your lack of ability to involuntarily push people in. There are two, two, I think, two coercive paths. One is through municipal court diversion for addiction type problems. And another one would be the involuntary treatment act, which has very little flexibility or, or utility as far as law enforcement goes. What, do you have any ideas for changes to the bigger question? The involuntary treatment act that would assist you in helping these people getting, coercing them in to treatment?
I do, and that's, it's not just shared by me. I, you know, I've, you know, partnered with Greater Lakes long enough and been involved with enough mental health treatment groups that I know that this, this sentiment is shared amongst mental health providers. In that, that the need for treatment is not factored into the involuntary treatment act. And having some sort of integration of, you know, the need for treatment into that act or into the law that allows for involuntary commit would be, I think, beneficial, not just for us, but, but for the, the mental health system to get people to the treatment they need. And the, you know, the current approach where, you know, the least restrictive alternative is the first priority is not always what's best for the patient or the person that's suffering mental illness. So you have people that are out in the community in the least restrictive alternative who are struggling to survive and decompensate without some sort of supervision or frequent contact from a provider. And they end up, you know, homeless. They end up getting kicked out or homeless. And it's a pretty obvious cycle and it's pretty, it's, I don't know, it's not a mystery of how it happens. But that would be, Councilmember Anderson, that would be, I think, one of the biggest changes that could help. And it's not, again, it's not us, it's the, the mental health system. And it's would be at the state level and take a huge change by our state legislature.
Do you know of any coalitions or prospective coalitions that might be working on that issue?
I don't.
Maybe Lakewood takes another leadership position when yet another big issue. Mr. Bokey?
Chief, in the last couple of years, though, didn't the legislature change it from like a 72-hour hold to a 120-hour hold or something so that when they're initially in for a consult? Didn't they change that?
There was a change. Yeah, there, there was a change relative to that. I'm not exactly sure what it was, but it didn't change the threshold for commitment, for the involuntary commitment. It's just how long they're held for evaluation after.
Okay, so it's, it's still, yeah, it is still at danger to themselves or others?
An imminent danger to themselves, like right now.
So the MOC-T team that's now supported by the behavioral health tax that folks in Lakewood pay into, they come into Lakewood and they do have the ability because they have a different level of, they have like a DMHP or something?
Right.
Do they come in and they do, they do some involuntary commits?
The DMHP can make that same decision. Actually, DMHPs, designated mental health professionals, or no, that, well, I think they're called DCRs now. They, they switched acronyms recently. But they and police are the only two that have the legal authority to involuntarily commit somebody. The threshold is the same for both of us. But the thing with the, the DCRs, the DMHPs is that they don't have, they're not going to physically grab somebody and involuntarily take them to a hospital. They're going to call us. So it still ends up sort of being on our plate.
Okay, all right. Do you get those calls?
Oh, yeah.
Thanks. Go ahead, chief. Any other questions?
Okay.
Is that it?
It's all from me. Thank you all.
It's plenty big of an issue, so thank you for your input and work. Okay, so.
So we're going to have Mr. Gumm come and speak a little bit to the housing programs that his program work, our, his department uses.
Great.
So, good morning, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council. Most of you see me throughout the year coming with various presentations on the, the programs that I, I work for. I would like to say I, I kind of have a, I'm proud of what I do here at the city of Lakewood. I'm proud of working with a proactive council. There's a, a bit of a, kind of a chicken and egg thing, I guess, with homelessness and affordable housing. I get to touch on both of those. I get to touch on both of those. But it's, we're still working on which is the, which is the function and which is the result of the function. Does, does affordable housing lead to homelessness? Does housing, does homelessness, is it a cause of, of a lack of affordable housing? Those are all things that we're trying to figure out. Some of the things that council that I see being effective in Lakewood, you all have been proactive in things like dangerous building enforcement and nuisance. So neighborhoods, we're looking to revitalize and redevelop through, through eliminations of some of those things. Slums and Lighter are something that we've worked on. The rental housing safety program, maintaining the affordable housing stock that we have, make sure they, make sure that it's safe. It's, it's decent and, and people are living in safe environments. So that's something that's having a, a big impact in the City of Lakewood. The other programs that I work with are CDBG Home and some of the things with the partnerships with the county and Tacoma, the twenty-sixty fundings, twenty-one sixty-three. Some of those are having big impacts. Low-income housing tax credits are, are things that we all work as a group for. So it's, I think it's, it's imperative. It's, it's not a, not a Lakewood problem, homelessness. And it's, it's something that I think that on a regional basis, we're, we're taking pretty seriously. The, the county, the cities of Tacoma and Lakewood have, have worked a lot closer, more closely together in recent years. The, the funding streams have become targeted. There's, there's a lot less funding in certain areas. There's a lot more funding in, in other areas. Some of the things that I've seen over the years, a lot of the focus has gone to permanent housing away from shelters and away from transitional housing. That's, that's something that I think we're starting to see coming back. And I'd like to see funding come back for those things. One of the things that, that you all saw, a presentation on Monday night, Lhasa. I don't, I don't necessarily need to go into great detail. I can, I can give you some background things. So with the coordination and some of the funding sources that are out there, the, there's, there's great opportunity with some of the things that we're seeing with ARPA, home ARP funding and some of these other streams coming forward that, that we haven't had in years past. So somebody in a position like Lhasa is, where they've got about two-point-three-seven acres, it, it's relatively undeveloped. There's fifteen units on there, but, but it does have potential to develop to fifty, sixty units at some point in time. And I, I think they're at a, a position now where, working with the county and the cities and the council to figure out how we want to develop that project. I think it's a great opportunity. However, that does develop, whether it be permanent housing, transitional shelter. It's, it's, it's something that Lakewood would benefit from. It would be a boon to the county, to the city, and something that I, I hope to see coming forward. There's a number of, of avenues that, that I have been working behind the scenes with my counterparts to kind of see if we can find a, a funding stream to make that happen, whatever that may be. So there's, there's a movement to, to fund these projects. And, and I, I think it's a great opportunity to the council. So with that, if, if anybody has any questions, I can be happy to answer.
Mr. Gumm, thank you. And even though we've had great success early on with the rental housing safety program, it sounds like the need is continuous, right? You're continuing to find and make improvements in the housing stock as a result of the program?
Yeah, there's, there's an ongoing number of units that are being maintained. And, and we are seeing improvements. I mean, there's, there's large investments in both multifamily and single-family rental. So it's, it is moving the needle.
Good to hear. Any other questions, Mr. Gumm, before we take a, looks like a quick break? Senator Mr. Brenstetter?
That, Mr. Gumm, what's your impression about how the multifamily tax program that we have of where the developer builds something and then a, a small percentage of the units are set aside for folks to do that and that they seem to usually be one-bedroom units in most cases? Is that really in, 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 in the picture of the problem? Something that's, that's effective? Or is that more just something to say that we did something?
Again, it's, you're kind of chicken and egg thing. I, I think it's a program that's important to have. In encouraging affordable housing, I think, is, is something that we need. I'm a fan of not necessarily focusing affordable housing. In years past, it was affordable housing developments. I mean, you would build two and three, four-hundred-unit apartment complexes for low, low-income housing. We've been moving away from that. And I think having it all throughout the community, if a commercial developer is developing something and they can build a, a number of those units in their complex, I think it's something that, that is, it's important to have. And, and I, I think it's an important thing to strive to, to continue to do. So I, I, I think it's a valuable component to our development.
I think Mr. Viewer had a comment as well.
Well, the multifamily tax exemption program, it comes down to a policy issue for the city council. Do you wish to build housing? Or do you wish to build housing with an affordability component? Unless so far to date, the council's position has been let the developer decide. Most of the MFTE programs that we've been approved by the city have been more market-rate housing. Only very recently have we seen people want to take advantage of the multifamily tax exemption and provide an affordability requirement into their project. But that's been upon their volition, not upon the City of Lakewood requesting or requiring it.
All right, I think it's time to stand, stretch, bio-break, grab a snack, grab another drink. And then city manager's saying ten minutes, so if you can come back by ten twenty-five. We have our guests here to speak to you, so that will begin after the break. Okay. I have not, so we can do that right now. Yeah. Yeah. This was on and it was red, so I didn't know if that was
You should, you're good.
Okay.
And if it
Give everybody about a two-minute warning if you make your way back to the table.
If we could only get Mr. Boki to stop talking. All right, Paul. Come on, brother. I've got one if you need one. Power cord if anybody needs one. Okay, you can borrow mine. I've got my computer, but I don't have the phone with me, so. Nice. Is that right? Yeah. Well, that's why I brought this anyway. All right, guys. That would be wonderful. I talked to a tech guy and he said they're still on VPN. Something we're going to lose. All right, guys, we're going to return to our agenda here. And now I believe we've got Ms. Beer leading us through a discussion of partnership opportunities. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. So, welcome back, Council. And we are now going to shift to some wonderful guests which we have available today. So I would thank them publicly once more for spending their Saturday mornings with us. We have both Heather Moss, who is the Director of Pierce County's Human Services Department, and Duke Paulson, who is the Executive Director for the Tacoma Rescue Mission. And then virtually, we're going to have Andrew Dyke, who is with Eco Northwest. And he was involved in the development of and then presentation recently to the county council of their, I'm going to get the name wrong, but essentially the gap analysis of the countywide Pierce, excuse me, homeless system as a, as a general term. So I'm going to begin to share the screen once more to bring up what you've been looking at, but we're going to jump to Ms. Moss's presentation. There we go. To advance the slide. Yeah, eat it, please. Wherever you want to be. And then to advance the slides, we'll just be there. Perfect. You're welcome.
So nice to see you. Thank you for having me here this morning. I appreciate the time to speak directly with you. So I, as I understand it, I have a couple of things on the agenda to discuss with you this morning. The first thing is I just want to give you an update. Well, first I should say my name is Heather Moss. I'm the Director of Human Services for Pierce County. I've been with the county almost three years now, two of which have been in COVID. So it's been a very interesting three years in my tenure with the county. But nevertheless, in addition to COVID response, we've had a lot of really good opportunity to address homelessness and housing initiatives. And I think those are the, the big topics that you want to talk about today. So the first thing I wanted to do was just give you a quick update on a pretty exciting new initiative that the county is working on in partnership with some of our private sector partners. And that is the Community First Village. The Community First Village is a housing model that started in Austin, Texas, with an organization called Mobile Loaves and Fishes. And the founder of Mobile Loaves and Fishes recognized that in his daily excursions out to provide food to homeless communities, that one of the things that was really missing was just that, a sense of community. And so he started to think about what it would take to build community in such a way that would provide significant and meaningful housing for the homeless population of Austin. That launched a pretty amazing initiative where he got a lot of private partnership. There's actually no public dollars in the initiative in Austin, but they have come to develop a large community. Fifteen hundred houses at this point are planned for the community. I think there's about 500 so far, little tiny homes that are on an acreage outside of the city limits of Austin, and it's called Community First Village. It is for housing of chronically homeless individuals. And there are a team of volunteers that spend their time there, providing community, helping support the residents. They also have a lot of housing, or I'm sorry, community services, and there's a medical clinic. They have microenterprises onsite. So it's a pretty amazing model, and it's very unique in our country in the sense that it's a lot of private sector investment, and it creates, again, this sense of community. One of the things that we find, and I think you'll hear this from Duke as well, is that the reason that people who are chronically homeless fail when they go into housing is that they lose that community that they have when they live on the streets. So how do you maintain and preserve that sense of community? And Community First Village in Austin has done that. Bruce and Executive Dan Meyer and his team were so taken with this model. They've traveled down a couple of times to, to visit in person. And he, he made a pitch to the county council and said, this is something we need to bring to our community. We have a chronic housing, we have chronic homeless population that we're not serving adequately in our homelessness system. So this is a way to address that. So he asked for, and the county agreed with him, and put $23.5 million, $23.3 million into the biennial budget this year. It's a pretty sizable amount of money. The intent of those dollars is to buy the property to house the Community First Village here in Pierce County. The council did put some conditions on that funding. They have set aside about $500,000 of that for, $500,000 for a feasibility study. So the executive staff and some of my team are working now with some help with volunteers. Duke is one of those partners to hire a firm to help us conduct this feasibility study for developing such a development here in Pierce County. And there's a big effort underway in looking for a parcel of land. We've estimated that to bring this to scale, which is where it gets meaningful, is we need about 15 acres. Looking for 15 acres in the, in the growth, like inside the growth boundary is, is not an easy task. Property is at a premium here in Pierce County, but there's some serious effort underway. They've got two or three properties, I think, that are on the shortlist at this point. So that's the, and then eventually, once we have the feasibility study done, we have a property identified. The next step would be to identify a provider who would help us develop this site and bring in some additional private sector funding and philanthropic dollars to build the properties. Our best guess at this point is that we would, this would happen over the next couple of years, and we could potentially see people living on this, in this property as soon as late 2024 or 2025. So that's an update on that. Very exciting news. And it's a pretty, pretty big deal for county government to be stepping out in front in using such an innovative approach to address homelessness for our chronic population. Think about the people who are in their 60s who have been homeless for 20 years or who come in and out of homelessness multiple times in their life and have come to identify the streets and the community that they live with on the streets as their home. So how, what do we need to do to address that? And I think that the Community First Village model is a really exciting opportunity. So more to come on that, but there's work underway to explore that as a key solution in our community. And I think Duke can shed a little bit more light on that one in his presentation as well.
Just a quick question.
Any questions or comments on that one?
Yeah. What is it that is different in Pierce County from Austin, where Austin was able to mobilize private sector interest and, and commitment and essentially the thing as opposed to Pierce County, where we have to use sizable public investment to make this happen, and I assume perpetuate it?
Yeah, it's a great question, and I don't think there's a lot different. The one thing that we saw, we've observed with the Community First Village is that there is a lot of church-based support for the program, and we are hoping that we'll see that happen here in Pierce County. But this is more that the county wants to see, wants to show that there's support from the county for this. So one of the interesting things about our approach is that we are intending to put the dollars down to purchase the property, but then are putting a lot of stock in the fact, in the hope that the private sector will step up, whether that's philanthropy or the religious community to help build the homes and supply the operating costs for the model. So I don't think we're going to see that much difference. One thing I would say, though, is that, that makes the Community First Village very successful is they have dozens of volunteers onsite every day. So it does take a, a population of people who are willing to contribute their time on a regular basis. So it'll be interesting to see how that plays out. But again, a lot of that comes from who the provider is that we pick to run this organization.
And when you talk about a target footprint of around 15 acres, is, is that most effective if it's a single footprint? Or like, could three, five acre footprints be a model?
Yeah, we're talking about both of those. I mean, again, the Austin model, I mean, they have no shortage of land in, in Texas. So they can stretch out, and like I said, they're going to be ideally up to 1,500 homes in this prop, single property. The 15 acres that we're talking about, we're estimating would be between 200 and 300, maybe expanding up to 400 or 500. We've talked about having dispersed sites, and that's an option. I think that you run into efficiencies. This, this economy's of scale, I guess, right? When you have multiple sites, you just need to think about what's the magic number to, to again, create that sense of community. So we're working on that as an option.
Thank you. Ms. Farmer, and then Mr. Anderson.
I'm curious, when you talk about land purchase, would the county also consider funding the rest of the infrastructure? Water, sewers, streetlights?
That will be, that will be part of the cost that we're assuming in those, in the $23 million. It's left over $22 million.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah.
Hey, just note for Mike's question, there are a couple of differences in Austin. It's, it's a wealthier area, and it's highly churched, where we're one of the lowest churched areas in, in the country. So there was a, a more privatized movement in that location.
Couple of questions. So in the model in Texas, so at least they have something from which we can glean results, data, that kind of thing. In creating that sense of community, did they develop some sort of internal governance by the residents?
They do.
And requirements to give back by way of either landscape maintenance or trash pickup and removal or something so that people have a sense of purpose?
There is absolutely an expectation that people participate actively in the community. That might be jobs onsite in the community itself. That might be jobs in the micro business section that they have. But there is a responsibility, or there's an expectation that people participate in the community.
And in terms of the types of that?
One thing I will, I want to say about that too, though, that's interesting, is that when the volunteers come on, they also want to make this really about the community of the residents. So volunteers actually pay to come and be a part of this organization. So that's one of the ways that they generate money in this program as well, is that volunteers are helping fund it as, just by coming onto the property.
Fabulous. And in terms of that type of housing, we've all learned, you know, sheltered housing, emergency housing, permanent supportive. What is this taking the shape of? Is it more permanent supportive housing?
It, well, yeah, actually, it would be. I mean, because, so the housing itself, the infrastructure, the houses are like what you would think of as an ADU. So they're self-contained, they have kitchens, they have bathrooms, most of them. There are some communal kitchens for the smaller ones. There are actually some RVs onsite, so you think about a mobile home park. So they have a mix of different things. But they, there is wraparound service, there are wraparound services available to all of the residents as they need them. There's onsite behavioral health services as well as physical health services.
And not just individuals, but also families?
It's mostly structured for individuals.
Okay.
And again, if you think about the chronically homeless population, it generally tends to be mostly men, but some couples, and people who are older than those who normally have children.
Got it.
So it's an older population.
Does the county typically, not typically, does the county foresee this project as being similarly directed toward the chronically homeless and not, obviously, the families or the couples, those kinds of things, individuals?
And again, it's, it's an area that we've not, we, I say, but typically, the homeless system is not very, is not very conducive to helping people who are chronically homeless because the idea is short-term investment, short-term supports to get somebody on their way to become self-sufficient. What we've learned about our chronically homeless population is that it's even harder, if not impossible, for them to live independently. So, yeah. One other thing that's really cool about Community First Village is that I was doing some research about it at home one weekend and was Googling or something, and Dwell Magazine popped up. So one of the things that they're doing at Community First Village is creating opportunities for innovation and building these tiny homes. So they have architects coming onsite, having contests about how they develop these really cool houses. So you can see really neat designs in Dwell Magazine, which I thought was awesome. Anything else on that initiative? More to come. Lots of possibility there, but we've got some major hurdles to overcome to get there. Growth Management Act and property being one.
Ms. Moss, how many, how many units are you looking to build in this village? Did you touch on?
Initially, we're thinking just for economies of scale. We want to start with at least 200, but then we hope that that can go up to 300 or 400, depending on what site we find. All right. So the second thing that is on the agenda that I wanted to cover with you is our comprehensive plan to end homelessness. So you guys see that there, I guess, right in here? Okay. So, like I said, my team has been very focused on COVID response for the last two years. And a lot of that has been meeting people's essential needs, whether that is rental assistance or senior meals delivered to homes or providing transportation when people were not able to take public transportation in a safe way. So, and, and developing, we've also been delivering essential groceries to low-income families across the county. That work has been really important. Meanwhile, we've also been thinking about homelessness and recognizing, as you all likely have, that homelessness has really become a bigger issue in our community and indeed across the country. Part of that is due to COVID, but part of it is because COVID took everybody inside and closed down the places that a lot of homeless people generally congregate during the day. It became more obvious. So you don't have the public libraries or the, or the McDonald's or the other places that, or the bus stations where you would normally be able to go and stay warm and stay out of sight as a homeless person. So now a lot of those people are more forced into outdoor environments where they become more visible to us. So homelessness is an issue in our county. Homelessness is an issue that's growing in our county. The county council recognized that. So last summer, they tasked my department with, what would it take to end street homelessness by November of this year? So that became the, the rallying cry. And we generated an action, a steering committee to help us identify what would be possible. You will probably notice that we did not make that goal. We did not end street homelessness by November 1st. But I'm proud to say that that, that ambitious goal really motivated us to create a, a pretty ambitious plan. And it galvanized a lot of energy and a lot of collaboration between the county executive and the full county council that I think has not been, has not existed before around homelessness. So I have a few slides here that I want to share with you just to go over the, the process that we used. So again, we had an 18-member steering committee. The steering committee was represented by individuals, stakeholders, providers, experts, community leaders, some of our staff, other government staff, the tribe was involved. And this group came together to advise our staff and really grapple with homelessness in Pierce County and what would it take to end homelessness. Duke was a part of that conversation, and he was also a part of the shelter work group that was more comprised of experts in the field who know what it takes to run a shelter and what would it take to expand our shelter system in Pierce County. We had seven subcommittees working through the, the big committee. You can see that they were focused on some pretty specific areas: behavioral health, funding, permanent housing interventions, temporary housing, all of the different types of shelter that we would need. We also conducted a lot of community engagement over the last eight months during this process. We had many, multi- We had um many pre, multiple presentations to community groups. We had an online open house during times of COVID. We were not um convening pub, large public meetings, but we had a really successful online open house. And then um, of course, all of our meetings for the steering committee were open to the public via Zoom. So we had lots of engagement that way, particularly from our stakeholder community. One of the things that's different about this comprehensive plan from other plans that the county has developed in the past is that it's really focused on community success. This was not about what program do we need to grow or how does this program work better than that program? It's about what does it take to end homelessness in Pierce County? We used five criteria around that and one of them was the idea of functional zero. So it's important to know that when we talk about this i- idea of ending homelessness, you can't really end homelessness. People come into homelessness for a lot of reasons that are hard to predict and hard to prevent. What you can do though is that when they become homeless, have a system that is adequate to immediately address whatever needs they have, whether that's shelter or rapid rehousing or behavioral health, inpatient or outpatient support. So you get to this idea of functional zero, which means someone becomes homeless, we immediately put them into this, into a, we meet the needs that they have to put them into a path to move back to permanent housing. So functional zero was one of our priorities. Another, another priority we focused on is the concept of targeted universalism. This really stems out of our DEI initiative at Pierce County where we talk about the fact that we might have a singular goal, which is to end homelessness and make sure people are housed. But as many people as there are homeless, there are different reasons that they are homeless and there are different needs they have to go back into being fully housed, permanently housed. So we might have one goal, but we need many pathways for people to achieve that goal. The third concept that we focused on is collaboration. You're going to hear me talk a lot about that. Um, the county council is not, um, and the county government is not the only solution to Pierce County homelessness. Neither is the Tacoma Rescue Mission. Uh, but with partnership between the council and the rescue mission and Lakewood and Fife and University Place and Puallup, we just might actually have an opportunity to address this in a meaningful way. The fifth concept seems kind of obvious, but um we put it down there, which is shelter. Um, one of the things that the county government has focused on historically is we have a finite amount of resources. We want to put those resources where they're going to make the most difference long term. So we have tended historically towards housing and interventions that keep, get people into housing quickly. That has left a burden on local communities, local governments to focus more on shelter. Uh, the city of Tacoma spends predominantly most of their homeless dollars on shelter. We started thinking about what if we had more of a shared responsibility around shelter to at least initially get people off of the streets and then we start thinking about what the next steps are to get them into permanency. The final concept that we all focused on here differently was surprisingly funding. You're going to see some big numbers in this presentation, but the idea was we all need to be on the same page about if we want to address homelessness in a meaningful way, what's it going to cost? And it's a big number. But I think the important thing is that we all recognize that it's a big number. So then the question becomes not what the number is, but how do we get there and who helps, who helps fund that? One of the first things we started with in our, in our work around homelessness was to come up with a number. It, it doesn't seem like it would be difficult, but it's hard to know how many people are homeless in Pierce County on any given day. We have a couple of imperfect tools we use to measure homelessness in Pierce County. One of them is the point in time count. This is federally required by HUD every year for every community that receives HUD dollars. And it's literally just that, a twenty-four hour period of time where we count people that we see visibly on the streets. We have outreach teams, we have volunteers, we have some elected officials who go out on this count with us and um that gives us a count. So that is the comparative tool that HUD uses to make funding allocations across the county, or across the country, I'm sorry. The other tool that we have is a, is called the human, um, the Homeless Management Information System, HMIS, or you'll hear it referred to as HIMSS. HIMSS is the tool that we use to collect data on homeless individuals when they come into our coordinated entry and they say, I need help. We collect a lot of information about them and then we start pulling resources and and getting them the assistance they need. So HIMSS is our, our case management system, if you will. So between HIMSS and point in time count, there's good and bad qualities about both of those ways that we collect information about our homeless population, but we used both of those to come up with this number. It, it was a very complicated formula that staff worked on, um, but they got to about thirty-three hundred. And they tested this a couple of ways. They looked at homeless trends in our community over time in the past. They looked at other like-sized communities and we feel pretty comfortable that thirty-three hundred, give or take, is about the rough estimate of any, of individuals that we have living homeless in Pierce County on, at, around, you know, most times. We have, um, at the time that we wrote this report, about a thousand shelter beds. So what that means is that there's a differential between the number of people who are homeless and the number of beds available. And that's obvious to many of you as you see the camps and the people sleeping in doorways and congregating um in public spaces. So one of the first things that we talked about is how do we start bringing down that gap between the number of homeless and the shelter beds? One of the first initiatives we started even before the end of the report was um at least putting some short-term dollars. So these are American Rescue Plan dollars into some temporary um expansion capacity for new shelter beds. And we put almost four hundred shelter bed, uh, money for almost four hundred shelter beds into the system over the last couple of months here. I think Tacoma Rescue Mission got some of those dollars actually for temporary expansion.
Thank you uh for the report. I'm just curious as to how do you account for the ones that choose to be homeless?
They're in that mix and you are right that there, there is a population of people who actively choose to, to be homeless. Uh, it could be anywhere between ten to fifteen percent of the population that's homeless on the streets. Those are our chronically homeless individuals. They might have um post-traumatic stress disorder. They might have um untreated behavior, other untreated behavioral health issues. And you're right that there are some people that we are not going to satisfy with our current model. Part of the hope is that a model like Community First Village would speak to them in a way that other more traditional systems might not. So we are hopeful that we will capture some of that ten to fifteen percent with the Community First Village. But there's, there is a chance that there are people who will not want to be housed, no matter what intervention we provide. Most of you recognize this map. It's just a map of the county council districts of Pierce County. It, it looks a little different now. This is the old map and then we just went through a redistricting. So there's a few lines shifted here, but the concept remains the same. We put this in our report because we wanted to remind people that the districts are generally set up to be evenly distributed of populations across the county. So each of those districts represents a little over a hundred and, what, a hundred and twenty-five thousand people, a hundred and thirty, somewhere around there. So technically or theoretically, right, you have a hundred and thirty thousand people in each of those districts. There are people in each of those districts who are suffering from housing insecurity and who become, who have become homeless. However, we know that most of our housing population or our homeless population is being served in shelters in District Four, some, but sometimes a little bit in District Five. What we want to talk about in this report, in this report and in the work and implementation is how do we build capacity outside of those two districts across our county to make sure that we're serving our homeless population where they live? One of the things that we know is that people stick close to home. So one of the things we ask in our point in time count is where were you last housed before you became homeless? We've found that eighty-seven percent of the people who we surveyed were still in the community where they lost their housing last. And we also know that people are most successful in being rehoused when they have a sense of community around them and that they are connected to people in their community. So we want to make sure that there are supports and resources and housing, whether that's shelter or permanent housing in all of the districts and all of the parts across our community. The report has six goals in it. Um, I'm going to go through these briefly because then I really want to spend more time on the, the overall funding projections we have in the report. Um, the first goal is to create a unified regional system and response. This came out of a, some national research that the committee was pretty taken with a few months ago. But what, and it follows through the theory that I've been talking about a lot, which is we can't do this with just county government or just city government. We need a regional approach. Homelessness does not know boundaries of our cities or whether it's incorporated or unincorporated. So one of the things that we've found in the course of this work is that communities who are successful in addressing homelessness pool their resources, pool their political power and, and pool their, their thinking and align, and have some aligned strategies around homeless response. So there's a lot of energy right now in Pierce County, um, with the council in particular and the executive is, is supportive of what, as well, of creating a unified regional system and response. So there's a little bit of work we need to do to figure out what the technical structure of this could look like. Think about the South Sound Housing Affordability Partnership. Um, so, so that's the first goal. Second goal is that we need to do a better job of using data to ensure that our invention, our interventions are effective. We talked a little bit about this during the break. The um human services system is really good at putting money out at, to um do good things. What we aren't so good about is measuring those and getting results back about whether we're making the right, the smartest investments that we can. So we have some work to do there across human services, but particularly in our homeless system. The third one probably seems somewhat obvious, prevent homelessness. This is a new, you're writing that down, Don, because you're going to, you're going to bring that back to me at work, aren't you? I know how this works. The third one is to um prevent homelessness. This seems kind of obvious, but actually the, the sad thing about public funding in homelessness is that you have to be literally homeless before you can get help. If people call us and say, I am about to be evicted, before we had rental assistance, we didn't have anything to help them with. We had to say, sorry, when you actually do lose your housing, come back and we can help you. But not until you are sleeping in your car can we help you. So we started to think about what is it that we can do to get a little bit further upstream and prevent homelessness? I guess the silver lining of COVID is that we got a lot of money in our community to establish a pretty robust rental assistance program. In addition to the rental assistance though, we also have people who are connected to um Tacoma Pro Bono and the Center for Dispute Resolution that help them think about um alternatives. Do you need to um reduce the size of your housing because you can't afford the housing that you're in? Do you need to renegotiate your lease? Do you need to renegotiate your mortgage? All of these ways that people who are stuck financially can um, can self-manage sort of what, what state they're in. So we, we have some more work that we want to do around prevention. The fourth recommendation is to ensure adjacent programs meet needs of homeless population. We refer to adjacent populations as things like the school system, the medical system, the jail system, the legal system. All of these organizations touch our homeless families in one way or another. And they are sometimes okay at dealing with the reality of homelessness and sometimes need a little bit of support and thinking about how to serve our homeless population better. So we have some goals around um helping them do that. Uh, the fifth goal is to meet immediate needs of those experiencing homelessness. That's really code for more shelter, um, that really our first and foremost priority should be helping people get off the streets. That sounds obvious, but I think the challenge comes again when you get to a, a reality of having a finite set of dollars. So if you have a hundred dollars, do you put all of your hundred dollars in shelter? And then you have no money left over to help with the other things and to help get them permanently housed? Or do you sort of split the difference and put half in shelter and half in, in affordability? So we're, we're grappling a little bit with that, but the idea is we want to make sure that as much as possible that the, that the county has adequate shelter so that people aren't sleeping outside. The fifth goal is to expand permanent housing. Again, probably an obvious one. We don't have a lot of data in this report, but there is a lot of work happening in the county right now looking at what are some of the best interventions to expand our affordability in housing across Pierce County? And that's absolutely the end goal of homelessness is we need more affordability for low-income families. And I'm not talking about just the eighty percent of AMI, but we're talking sixty percent, thirty percent, or some people who don't have any income at all and won't have any income at all. So more, more work to do there. So this um is a conceptual model that I think really helps tell the story of where we're at and where we need to go. So I want to explain this um and then go to a comparative slide. So what this shows you is if we were to reach in this, this um admirable goal of functional zero where we had enough structure in our community to take care of everybody as they became housed or homeless, we would have a system that looked kind of like this. So picture this as, I think, a hundred little boxes. So we have five boxes for homeless prevention. We have shelter and transitional for a few people. We have diversion for a lot of people. Diversion is um helping them go back into uh temporary housing or permanent housing with family or to mo- re, reunite with people in different communities where they've come from. Rapid rehousing is temporary investment of dollars to get people into a new apartment and help them pay their de- deposit or first and last month's rent. Um, housing vouchers, we need fifteen percent of our um capacity needs to be around expanded housing vouchers. We also need more permanent supportive housing and of course, we need more affordable housing. So in the perfect world, if we had this type of, of scale in our system, we could achieve functional zero. So what you have here on the right is the um, that model I just described to you about functional zero and where we want to get. What you see on the left is our approximation of what our system looks like right now. So in Pierce County, we have a teeny tiny bit of, well, we might have enough homeless prevention right now because of rental assistance um from ARPA. We have a little bit of transitional housing and shelter, not enough. We have a little bit of diversion, not enough. And so on and so on, right? A little bit of rapid rehousing, a little bit of supportive housing. We have no housing vouchers um in our, that are pred- predominantly focused on our unhoused population. And we have very little affordable housing. So we have a long way to go between the, the concept model on the left to get to the um ideal state of functional zero. But I think what I really appreciate about this slide is just showing not only the scale of where we are and where we need to go, but the different types of interventions that we are pretty confident we need to invest in to make a difference. Uh, now we're going to talk a little bit about money. This slide has a lot of detail on it and you have it in your packets if you want to look at the um detail. And I'm not going to go into the detail, but I think overall, what the, what this shows you is what you see in blue is what we currently spend across the county in our shelter and our homeless investments. And what you see in orange is our approximation of what's needed. There's a lot of orange and not very much blue. It's kind of the picture, the, the point we want you to take away from this model. It also shows you generally where we need a little bit more, um, where we need more money that we've never invested in before. I will pause on this just to sh- talk about housing vouchers for a minute. You'll see that there's not a lot of money in housing vouchers in our community right now. We do have housing vouchers, both the Tacoma Housing Authority and Pierce County Housing Authority, but compared to what the need is, it's pretty small. The interesting thing about housing vouchers, yeah. I think it's forty. Is that not right? Way deep. Oh, my goodness.
Is this county, is this the county funding or does the funding, the blue reference, all funding that you think is available?
This is county funding.
Okay.
Yeah.
Councilmember Farmer.
Right.
Um, this is not part of the five hundred-page um report. This was something that was put together um just yesterday as part of today's presentation. So if you don't have it as the PDF that was sent to you, you'll get it later today.
Oh, I'm sorry about that. I thought you had it. Okay. Soon. Correct. Yes. But I think you raise a good point that, that there, it's really, is it really appropriate to think about putting county money into a housing voucher system, right? I mean, we don't have the taxing capacity at the county or local levels to sustain a meaningful voucher system. So there's more work to be done, I think, thinking about as a society, do we put more money into housing vouchers?
When you say housing vouchers akin to Section Eight, right?
Correct.
So hoop on Section Eight right now, is that all?
But HUD, I mean, there are, VA also has, like, there's HUD-BASH vouchers.
Okay.
Yeah. And they're not actually called Section Eight anymore.
Just, yeah, but it's, it's.
But yeah.
Out federal money, choice. Okay.
You would, you know, Section Eight better by.
Yeah, yeah. Um, just a couple of other slides and then I, I am done with my part. The, this is another way to look at the current recurrent funding, annual funding. And I'm correcting myself, um, Duke. This is actually, my understanding is the public dollars. So you can see the city of Tacoma dollars in here. Most of the dollars that we spend on homelessness in Pierce County come from the lock, local document recording fee. So this is a, an assessment on documents um that are recorded with the county. an assessment on documents that are recorded with the county. And some of those dollars go to the state to be redistributed across the state and some of them stay here locally and we spend those on homelessness as directed by a state statute. We also have a small investment from the housing authority. Of course, the State Department of Commerce put some state dollars in. Then we have federal HUD dollars and then the city of Tacoma's annual ongoing investments.
And Heather, how much is that local document recording fee going to change with the recent legislative change?
So the hundred dollars additional, is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
Yeah, pretty significantly, actually. So that number will more than double. But there is more expectation that we use some of the DRF, the expanded DRF dollars for rental assistance. So some of that will be set aside for the prevention that we were talking about.
Was there a change that just came out this last session, increase the document recording?
An additional surcharge.
Our office pays half of that budget amount annually?
The the there's a local document recording fee set aside for affordable housing. So that's a separate one. And then there's the one for homelessness. It's the homeless one. I think it's actually different documents that are where you receive the the funds. But it's on the housing or the homeless side where they've added that additional surcharge.
You can, it's one of those things where they overlap. You can use A for B, but you can't use B for A.
In the DRF dollars?
Yeah.
Yes. So again, when you think about that functional model about where we are and where we need to be, we tried to put some numbers to that just so we could start thinking about scale here. And these are numbers that our staff came up in a partnership with the steering committee and some other folks. In terms of building out our capacity for shelter, we're estimating that we would need an additional fifteen million dollars in capital funding to stand up a expanded shelter system. Permanent supportive housing starts talking about really big numbers. And again, permanent supportive housing is for typically for people at or below thirty percent AMI, so deeply subsidized housing with twenty-four hour case management support in the housing. So that's a very expensive type of housing. And then affordable housing, we don't have a number there, but again, it's it's probably even bigger than that. And I know that you are like many jurisdictions across the county grappling with affordability in our communities. And that's really where we're going to get to, making a significant difference in homelessness is creating more capacity in our affordable housing. The good news in these costs is that when we do address homelessness, there are some cost offsets. So there are places where we save money. We save money in healthcare and law enforcement. So these numbers are indirect household indirect costs per household. And what you can see is that there is a societal cost to homelessness. So when we start addressing homelessness to the extent that we get to functional zero, you start seeing a reduction in public service costs in facility costs across the city where we're doing cleanup, right? You're going to see those. You're also going to see increased revenue in the ways of tourism and local businesses. So there is a a balance sheet that you can think about when you address homelessness. I think this is close to my last slide. The county council is in the process of formally adopting and approving this plan that we've put into place. And then we will start with implementing strategies around the plan. As part of that formal adoption, they've allocated eight nine million dollars of American Rescue Plan as a sort of down payment. So this is just showing you how we are proposing to make those initial investments. It's a small amount of money, but what we're thinking is that we can make meaningful investment, one time investment in areas that the county has not invested in before and to start making a real difference and show a commitment to a new way of addressing homelessness in our community. The other things that are going to happen in terms of next steps are we're doing outreach like this, coming to talk to our partners across the local communities. You're going to be hearing later today about the Eco Northwest findings. There's a little more of an economic flavor to their findings that I think is going to be very informative to our work. And then we are start starting talking about implementation and finding some money for this. The steering committee will have an ongoing role and we're going to recruit Duke and other members of the steering committee to continue help advising us on how to make this all work in the next years to come. With that, I that's my planned presentation, but I'm going to stick around for a while and hope that I can answer questions and just listen to your comments and feedback and think about how we at the county can be really good partners to Lakewood as you think about homelessness in your community. Correct. Yes, it does. And so how does it what?
How does that adjust your totals on your page? If there's ten percent included in there, what is actual? If they choose not to be.
And that's hard to know. It really is. I mean, unless you poll everybody about what it would take to get them housed, what we know is that some communities that are very good at ending homelessness and achieving functional zero recognize they still have some people who don't want to be housed. And there there that's where we see the experience of around ten percent. But maybe we can cut it, make a dent in that with something like Community First Village. The costs are assuming everybody is housed at some point or everybody is in a shelter at some point. So yeah, the numbers are pretty rough and and maybe we don't need two thousand more beds of shelter. It might be that the system starts moving a little bit more and we can move people out of shelters and have a little more turnover. So they're approximate numbers just to get us again, thinking about scale and thinking about how to take our next steps.
I I appreciate that, but we did find here local that there were a lot of people that did not want to be assisted. So that was why I was coming.
And yeah, and we see that. I mean, I know that the city of Tacoma is struggling with that as well as they are starting to actively clear camps that they are we are obligated under law to provide options for people to get into housing, into shelter. And so there are always shelter beds available when this when any city chooses to start moving a camp and and cleaning up a camp. People will be offered that and say no, and then they'll move on to somewhere else. And there's not a lot that we have in place to really address that at this point. But the question is, if we had different types of shelter, would they maybe say yes? So you're going to hear, you probably hear a lot of people talk about low barrier shelter. So right now, there's conventional wisdom and Duke, you're going to probably challenge me on this. Yeah. That that a lot of shelters have expectations about, you know, they have community rules. And people don't want to meet what those rules are, whether it's clean and sober or in by eight PM and and, you know, don't come in and out multiple times and just whatever the rules are. But it's also about things that are more practical, like I have a partner or I have a pet. And where do I go if I have a pet and I don't want to leave my pet behind? So things like that where we as a community can do more to provide adequate different types of shelter that I think could get at some of that ten percent.
Thank you.
Heather, just a follow up question on that. What has been Austin's example, the state of Texas, their approach toward not just making shelter available, but making it more mandatory that people obtain treatment? Because that's a function of the homelessness issue. It's not the issue, it's an issue. So how do we, how do we force that angle, so to speak? By getting back to involuntary treatment if we need to, to make sure people get the nudge?
Yeah, that's a tough one, right? I mean, there are some people who probably don't know what they need, right? But I don't believe, and I don't know the Texas law well enough to know if they have an involuntary treatment law. That's different than what we have here here in Washington. Here in Washington, it's pretty narrow. But I would say that and the model like Community First is about developing relationships and creating safe space where people start to feel like they have a home and like they have a community around them that would lend them to be more open to treatment. So I think part of it is just, again, providing that safe space for people. Could get us part of.
Does that safe space have a laissez faire approach toward drug addiction abuse within the community or not?
So there are rules at the Community First Village around what you do in public, but remember that these are individual private homes. So there's a lot of sort of be on your best behavior in the public places and obey the laws and be a productive member of the community. But yeah, maybe a little more. I it's certainly not a police state where people are searching individuals' homes.
Mr. Bokey, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you. The three hundred and sixty-five beds by December thirty first of twenty-two. Are are those already in place? And does that include the Comfort Inn property, Aspen Court?
Yes, and yes.
Okay, so approximately the breakout. So there's Aspen Court and what other?
There's there's just added capacity in most of our other facilities that the county funds. So the I don't have the details. I can certainly get them, but I know that the Rescue Mission has a few.
It's just added capacity of other spots. Okay.
The Rescue Mission added fifty beds in partnership with the Holy Rosary School.
Oh, okay.
And several churches opened space up. And so it's it's been added capacity throughout the shelter system.
And nativity house added capacity as well.
Yeah.
Okay. That's that's all. Thank you. I don't know how it interfaced. Austin was different. It it interesting in that they had a city council virtually unanimously reject repeal the ban on street camping. They had a huge problem and there was an initiative, a bipartisan initiative to reinstate that over the mayor's and council objection. So they went back and banned street camping camping again. So I don't know how that interfaced with their village. But it was interesting dynamic there. So if you could say how how that interface, I I
The village, so technically the village is in the adjacent county. So they're on the border of Tyler County.
Okay.
That's where they could get the property and they have fifty acres there and another hundred acres they're adding. So they're not in the city limits, but they're on the edge of it. So that's how they they had impact from it, but they weren't underneath that city situation. But you're right, they kind of made national news with the pushback.
And I my understanding is counties have very difficult, different political
Yeah, so Houston, it's very analogous to Seattle. As in in Texas, the holdout of a conservative city, well known, reversed in Seattle in some sense, but as far as the size, the tech hub status, the the money flow to, part of the reason they were able to go private is they received fifty million dollars from the Dell family. So they they have that capacity on some level to launch what they did. Yeah.
The other question have which Heather knows my question is what part of that system, you you will go back to your chart that had data on it? We've gone from so probably my words originally, not yours. It was with the contract said, here's money, do good things. Now they say, here's money. Do this many good things. The next step is do many this many good things and who did it help and how? And how are we going to tell at the end of the day which one of those paths was most successful in actually changing people's lives?
So a couple of things. One is that is, as you know, that we we have some work to do on our contracts to make sure that we have outcomes identified in our contracts and unit units of service so that we can start comparing. The challenge with that is that there are different models and and different approaches needed for different types of of people, right? The the not different types of people, but the needs of different people. People have different needs, I guess is what I'm saying. So it might be that someone is successfully housed after a very minor intervention of just help with their first and last month's rent. That's all they need and they're going to get back on the feed and they're fine. So that one's pretty cheap. Then you have somebody else who needs inpatient behavioral health services for six months and then they need supportive housing after that. That's a much more expensive intervention. And I think the challenge is how do we, you can't compare those, but how do you start thinking about what the benchmarks in within each of those types? So that you're getting effective treatment and effective costs for each type.
And I don't disagree. I think there are going to have to be some public policy choices because at the end of the day, if you look at that gap, you can't be all things to all people. So there's going to have to be some triage instead of peanut butter.
I think your your question is well taken in the sense too that we have to think about where public dollars go, right? Because there are, there might be services that are more appealing or conducive to private dollars or the business sector contributing. And I think that's where we have a lot of work to do as a community. Thinking about where our where the county public dollars are most effective.
And I'm sure we'll learn from our mistakes and we'll learn what has been most effective down the road as we get into it.
Yeah, and I think studies like the Eco Northwest study will start and, you know, just bringing people in to help us think about long term cost return on investment is really where we see a lot of potential.
Mr. Mayor, if I could play timekeeper for just a moment, we're starting to run short a little bit on time with Mr. Paulson as well as our other guests that will be logging in shortly.
Okay.
And I'll be here.
So what what is next? Is it Mr. Paulson then?
Yes, it is.
Great. Thank you. Very, very, very thorough. Thank you.
I'm going to grab my water.
Kind of exciting.
Okay. Hi, my name is Duke Paulson. I get to, I have the honor of representing the total rescue mission to you guys. I don't know why our logo is blocked out at the top. I did something. It looks better on your TV. All right. So I've been the executive director there for four years, the sixth month. I've worked in Tacoma, Pierce County in nonprofits for twenty almost thirty years now, gosh, and enjoy partnering I with Lakewood. I've worked in MDC and Multi Care and some other stuff over the years. So it's been I'm happy to be here. I wanted to give you guys a little bit of a snapshot. Okay. Sorry, I actually put this together last night, so this is not the finely polished presentation I'd love for it to be. I was kind of this pulling things together quickly. Twenty twenty-one for the rescue mission, just to give you perspective, this is, I'm not trying to go into depth on it, but we served about two hundred thousand plus meals. A hundred and forty thousand bed nights. So that's a number of nights someone stayed in a bed at the rescue mission. And just under twenty-eight hundred people, individual people that were sheltered or helped coming through our system. So if you think of that in the scope of three thousand plus people experiencing homelessness, we touched nearly three thousand people coming through that were either receiving a meal or coming in for to stay with us overnight. We're over three hundred thousand, but around three thousand individuals that came through. I'm going to just show a little bit of our stats. We were talking about our outcomes. I'm glad I kind of queued this up a little bit. Pre pandemic, so if you if you start toggling back and forth here, if you look at that number of bed nights, number of people served, and then you go pre pandemic, this was our stats, were about five hundred eighty people left the rescue mission to enter permanent housing. So out of three thousand, you're you're talking fifteen, sixteen percent of people are that are coming in the door are actually leaving into permanent housing. We can track that going with this. So that's it's on a county standard. That's not us doing something unique or playing with that data. And almost five hundred people that increased their job or obtained a job through employment. Now, those two numbers overlapped, so some of those five hundred eighty-one in the top number and some of the five hundred below could have done both. And some people did it separately. Someone might have just gotten the job and then moved on without getting the permanent housing. This number kind of surprised people. We served almost four hundred youth and had over nine hundred hours of mental health counseling. We do that with our family program, with our addiction recovery program, et cetera. Twenty twenty-one, it's been harder. So I'm kind of showing you like here's how it was functioning before the pandemic. Here's how it is now. Little under three hundred people left the mission into permanent housing. Little under two hundred fifty obtained jobs. It's a little weird with the wonky job market. People, hey, we need to hire people, but it's hard to hire people. And it's hard to hire someone when you've had a big gap in your resume or you've had a criminal charge or you've had, so we have extra challenges. Still around three hundred youth. Still around three hundred youth. Our number dropped in part because of the eviction moratorium. We couldn't move people out of our family shelter. So even though it's, you're not paying to be there, we still had to hold people because it would still be considered an eviction. So we were down a little bit in our number. It was a, I don't know, we had to work with the governor on that and we never got it resolved. So we are now turning that over more and about seven hundred fifty hours of counseling, mental health counseling. Part of that was we lost a staff person. So I just I want to say that just for perspective of numbers and volume. Also just, and I don't have this slide up here because I hadn't thought about it until you guys were talking. The rescue mission is, I want to say is a cool example of a public-private partnership in a lot of ways. So of our budget, over sixty percent of our funding is private funding coming into the mission. So we do have county and city and federal contracts and dollars that escalated to a higher amount during the pandemic. We had extra relief using some ARPA funds and such. But out of nine million dollars, about six million of it plus is coming from the community. And so that's really gives us a lot of flexibility and gives us a lot of ability to go deep in what we do. And I think it's just a good representation of leverage funds. So the money coming in, as we do good work, the community's seen us and then, and then we're going on to do, we get to do more good work. So. I was asked just to talk to you a little about some of the things that we see coming up that are, this is just projecting forward in the next five years. Knowing Heather kind of laid the foundation of what's happening with homelessness and and you guys have obviously been talking about this. So here's what I'm looking at and what I'm talking to our organization and board and other things moving forward. So currently underway, we're looking to expand our shelter. So we did build a new women's shelter. This, it opened in the middle of the pandemic, actually three months in. And so we have on our, on our downtown campus on South Tacoma Way, we have a shelter for women and a shelter for men on the same campus. They're separate because it's really hot. People are like, oh, you need to do, we actually wanted to do like, we'll have space for couples. It would be great because people say, oh, I don't want to come in because where's my partner going to go? The problem is, how do I determine are you really a couple? Or are you twisting someone's arm because you want to get into a couple's shelter or are you using it for other purposes? And I don't want to be the arbitrator of that. So it's a little bit easier. It is easier for us to say we have men's and women's shelter on the same property. We have common staff space, meal space, everything else is shared. But we don't have potential abuse of that situation of how that can be used. It's just it's a little complicated, but I think you get it. So, so we, we expanded that. But our original shelter, that building on South Tacoma Way was built twenty-two years ago for sixty people. Pre-pandemic, our average stay was about a hundred, about a hundred and forty people a night. Hundred and thirty-nine, hundred and forty are in cold weather in the winter, we'd go to over two hundred. And that was, so think of it, it has five toilets, five urinals and five toilets with up to two hundred people in it and ten showers. So for sixty, that was a good number. For two hundred plus, it just, we did it because we were trying to serve people and we don't want to turn people away, but it's hard. So we, in the county budget, there's money set aside trying to partner with the city of Tacoma. Our goal is to do about a sixteen to eighteen million dollar renovation and basically build up. So we have, and I'll get to what that is and what we're doing, but that's our top priority we're moving forward on right now because there are some funds to do this and we, and we just need to rethink what we do with that. Quickly, just so you get some idea, because it has some sides going more depth in this, we are looking at doing a hotel shelter. I know there's a conversation with the county. There'll be an RFP process. We've been preparing and talking about that for over a year. We've talked to City Lakewood at some points about this. I know I talked to Don a little bit about what monitoring, what's been going on in the city here. For the mission, who's had the focus of our services have been in Tacoma, we're trying to be broader and partnering with more municipalities to, and we receive some support from Lakewood and PUA for because we have people, the only place to come is to us. In the scope of shelters, basically you have touching on something Heather said, low barrier shelters, you basically have the rescue mission and nativity house. And on bed number, we're slightly larger, but it kind of fluctuates depending on how big it winter capacity we have or what's going on. Just to put perspective into what that low barrier is, our only rules to come in are you can't distribute or use drugs or alcohol on our property. You can come in high, you can come in intoxicated. We don't care how you come in. You just can't share it with other people or sell or distribute or use here. And you can't destroy property or threaten someone else. That's our rules. Other than that, we'll take anyone. You don't have to have ID. You can bring your pet. We now have men and women can both be on the same campus. It's just pretty much wide open. It's that's low barrier. That's ultimately what we want to keep. We're actually fighting with the, with the health department because they were trying to say we would have to keep our mask mandate. And I'm telling you right now, we're refusing. This isn't recorded publicly. Okay, we're going to, I'm already out there doing it. We're going to let people come in. It's their choice. Because I don't want a barrier to be like, oh, they're going to make me wear a mask. We don't make people get up and leave. We have people, we have a tent people can stay in during the day. We do have people get up. You can't stay in bed all day and do nothing, but you, but there are not, a lot of the horror stories that people will tell you are not what it really is. It's just there's a lot of excuses out there. So that's low barrier shelter. That's the core of what we provide. We're looking at doing a hotel. We are aggressively partnering and trying to see what it would look like that Community First Village be in something to happen in Pierce County. I've been there a couple of times. I'm now got accepted into Community First Village, has reopened a training that they do, which is come down and study and will open up our staff to do a symposium about how we do, what we do. So I'm going down in May to be a part of that and try and bring that back. And that's really realizing that in the spectrum of shelter, there is what we provide really well, a safe place for anyone to come in, for food and for a place to stay and be safe. And our goal is that that's the welcoming, opening, come to us. And then we're going to help you with case management, with supportive services to identify the barriers that you have. So to stay with this, we'll have this conversation. And to stay with us beyond thirty days, we're going to expect to say, okay, hey, there's six barriers. You don't have your driver's license, you have a criminal issue that we may need to figure out. You have maybe an addiction issue, whatever that is, we'll go lay that out and then create a plan driven by the person for what they need to do to help get back into a safe environment other than being homeless. However, we're not great with chronically homeless. A chronically homeless person, if you've been on the street for ten years, and we have this right now. And you're a seventy-year-old individual who's been, we have someone who's in our shelter who has been homeless since nineteen eighty-eight. He's seventy-five years old. Yep, grew up in, grew up in Midland area. House burned down, parents died, all this stuff happened, trauma. He never got back in. He's not going to ever rehab into a job and a career and other stuff that would be a normal traditional way out. He's basically a place like the Community First Village would be a place where you can live and honestly, good guy. Like he wants to good, he wants to have a safe place to live. He wants to live out the rest of his days. He just bounces back and forth between shelters and camps. So, and then we're also looking at doing some sort of a I'm, I'm an advocate for, yes, there's a need for shelter, but you can't say there's three thousand people on the street and then say we need three thousand shelters. That's, it just, it doesn't work. And even if you had three thousand shelter beds, you're not going to get all those people on the street. You could give me three thousand beds right now and I couldn't get everyone in. There are people that would choose to stay out. There's people that it's about creating, finding the right path for people and removing the barriers and you have to build the relationship. So it's not just because there's a place to go, everyone wants to go there. It has to be a good reason for them to want to engage with us. Yeah, and they'll say that. I don't want to abide by the rules. We've had people that got kicked out. Well, you pulled a knife on a self-person. Because they said, please throw your stuff away in the garbage and you got mad. Okay, for the next ninety days, you're not going to be allowed to come back in. And then we'll revisit and if you come back and apologize, that's fine, but we do have consequences. Technically ninety. The way we operate is if someone comes in and they create a plan, we basically say you have thirty days. Thirty days, come in and get safe, get comfortable, you can stay here. In that time, you need to meet with the case manager and start to create a plan. If you don't, or you wait till day thirty and then meet with the case manager, it's too late, we're going to ask you to move on. If you create that plan and continue to work on it and show progress, I'm not going to kick someone out at ninety days who's actually working on something. So in our shelter right now with ninety to a hundred men in the shelter, I think as of two weeks ago in check, we had sixteen people that are employed that have been working on improving themselves. We're not going to say you're at ninety days, you need to leave. Hey, you're working twenty-five hours a week. That's fantastic. Let's keep, let's keep this going because I want to launch you into permanent housing. So if someone's making progress, we're not going to kick them out. Part of that's the flexibility of having the private funding that we can kind of keep doing that.
Thank you. You said that your capacity was like ninety and you had over two hundred. How did that affect the spread of COVID?
So that was pre-COVID that we were doing that. So, and to be honest, the first three months when, of COVID, of the pandemic, we had two hundred and forty people a night in our shelter because everyone was terrified. And we didn't have a better place. When we weren't going to kick people out, it was also winter at that point. We did create a partnership with Bellarmine and we moved fifty people there. We created another partnership with Holy Rosary and moved fifty people there. So we spread people out to get to a social distancing space. We also no longer serve indoor meals, same as restaurants. So we converted our dining hall and our, our common space into another dorm and we just spread people out. We have not had a single person from our shelter end up in the hospital. We went six months without having a COVID incident and then we've never had an outbreak or a scary like situation at all. We've never had the like hundreds of people or even, we haven't a staff person that's been in the hospital either. It's, it's been, we've had some people get sick and test. We've been a vaccination site. We promoted being healthy and safe, but we've not had any what you would consider an outbreak or shutdown situation.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Yeah, and I honestly, I, our staff have been fantastic with, one, continued to do everything that we did. Just, we kind of self-declared ourselves essential service and kept going. And but we just tried to do what we could to be safe and it never, I, we prepared for the worst and the worst never hit us. So. Here's a drawing of our architects. Oh, sorry.
Duke, Mr. Anderson, a question. And Duke, I know you've had a veterans program down there. Their additional resources, please, available to some eligible veterans. Is there any utility in having that program in a place like Lakewood that's closer to the VA or?
Yes, so we have a veteran-specific shelter because, and it has its own space, it has different responsibilities that go with it. But for our veterans, they're pretty used to having stricter responsibilities. And by responsibility, I just mean they're given more freedom, but they're a little more asked for them for their maintenance and their engagement, what they do. We have a regular route. We go back and forth with the VA all the time. And it's been a fantastic kind of subgroup that we work with. I would love to be closer to or continue to partner more with the VA in our military outreach. I think fifty percent of my shelter staff are former military also. We have a heavy military influence in what we do and how we serve. So up here, so a couple of photos of, that would be expanding up. You see it's actually three stories of shelter to expand our recovery program. Here's our, on the far right of this, and I know I didn't get this early enough to give it to you. Expanding our, our shelter space to a hundred and sixty guests, which would be a pretty big increase. Our addiction recovery program, we're about a six grand increase. Remodeling our kitchen and redoing a dining space. So we actually have a robust dining space again. And increasing our staff and guest space and probably, we'd like to actually do like a medical. We're trying to partner with some local groups to have a spot where someone can come in and get assessment for medical, mental health, visions, dental, all in the same space. So City of Pierce County has committed five and a half million dollars towards that. See if Tacoma's working on trying to match that. And we're, we're just trying to pull together coalition to really make this happen quickly as, as our top priority.
Is that COVID relief money eligible? That kind of project?
Yeah, that's actually where this is coming from, really. And then the other part about this, it's if you think of a traditional shelter, the old-fashioned way, it looks like an old dorm sleeping porch at a at a college where it's just a whole bunch of bunk beds in a big, big room. That's how we were getting to two hundred. We just putting more bunk beds in and they're getting closer. Now they're spread out. We're actually trying to move away from bunk beds. So this is an example of, you can see it better on the TV, a system where the beds are actual, one, there's no more ladder. It's harder when you're over fifty to climb up a ladder to get into a bed. It's dangerous actually for us. So something where there's stairs and you'd actually have separate beds that are, and if you can, you can't totally see from these photos, but an individual locker, a cubby hole with a nightlight and a phone charging station and kind of your own space where really you only see the person across the way from you and maybe the person up above, but then you're have a more private space. And that's trying to address some of the issues where people say, oh, I don't want to go there because everyone's there in a coffee numbing. So here's a space where you're six feet apart, you're in your own, you're in your own kind of cubby. But we can still do it in a congregant way because it's so much more cost-effective and, and, and effective for us to be able to do this in a group setting still at some level. So that's our, we have this design. We've been working with the contractors. They're based in Chicago. When we redesign our space, we're actually going to order these beds and bring them in and have a, basically a whole new system for, of space. And that's designed specifically to bring people in. Okay, if that's one of the problems you have, here's a way we can help address that. So. We're excited about that.
I'm jumping for a second, but I got a question in my head. Do you guys track communities of origin for the guests that come in?
We do.
Okay, so at some point you'll let us know, G, you've got X number from Lakewood that consistently utilize our services.
We have a heat map that shows the little like, we can show it all over the US where people come from, but in Pierce County and then, and then draw down. So we do ask those questions and track it and, and show where people are coming from. And we do have a number from Lakewood from the, you know, around Tacoma Pierce County. The question is, where is the last place you lived? And so we provide that. We are working on trying to purchase a hotel or trying to figure out what that would be like. We're also trying to partner with, I'm trying to partner with our local healthcare providers to possibly do a respite site. So one of our issues are people that have been in the hospital and have medical needs, but you can't be released. You can't go home. You don't have a safe place to go and recover from surgery or get your antibiotics treatment or something. So a place where we could actually partner with. It's really heartbreaking when someone, we actually have people who get sent to our shelter and then we have to run, say, this person can't be served here. We don't have the medical capability, even for light medical, I can't take that responsibility on and all the other stuff we have. So we have to send someone back. And they get stuck in the system. And they get stuck in the system. There are, there are other models, there's a place in Arizona that does it well. Multi-Care and Franciscan are united in trying to do this. And they're asking for someone to do it, they just don't want to create the space. So I'm looking at this opportunity like, oh, if we can get a hotel that has 100 units and I could have 50 be used for respite and 50 be used for shelter and separate the space and do this in a, like, use some of the money that's available right now to remodel so we can do that well. That's what I'm trying to figure out how to do. Potentially, I think the hospital's actually willing to help pay for that because it's way cheaper for them to have someone stay with us than to have someone stay in the ER or in any other bed in the hospital system. And that they would help, my deal is, they would need to help provide the nursing assistance for the medical, I don't want to take that.
Yeah, yeah. As you're looking for an opportunity to do this, what's your criteria with respect to location? I mean, are you looking for a location that has got a core number of folks that need to be served, or are you more saying, no matter where I put it, they'll come?
Yeah, with the respites, it's not dependent on location. For shelter, I'd like it to be outside the Tacoma area, I'd like it to be in one of our partnering communities. We're not trying to have it be so big that it would be, you have to have, you know, 1,000 homeless people to make this work. People will, if you look at Fife, Lakewood, Puyallup, Midland, Parkland area, there's enough people in those areas that are experiencing homelessness that a 40-person shelter, 50-person shelter would not be a regional draw, it would actually be, no, it's serving this community, that's kind of what we're looking at.
And then, you know, in your current shelter, which is not really in a residential neighborhood, but it has had a magnetic effect on folks that aren't staying with you, but that choose to camp nearby. That is, that's something that a new shelter location should expect?
You know, it's interesting. Potentially, although with the, like the Sadeev Tacoma working on applying pressure, so someone brought up, I think Heather brought up, when someone says, hey, we're going to help move inside along or relocate it. We see an increase in our shelter typically of some people coming in, we don't, if 20 people were in an encampment, we don't see all 20, we might see five. But for those five people, that's a chance for us to engage with them. For the people that choose to camp close to a shelter like ours, we actually don't serve them. So we actually go up and get to know those people, but then we don't, we won't say, come in and have food, or it's like, no, while you're staying here, you can't access our facility. If you come into our facility, absolutely, everything's open to you, but we try and harden that. So there's, there's, but our current location happens to be a nexus where there's sound transit property, Pierce County property, city property, TPU property, and so it's kind of, there becomes a finger point of who's going to clear what, is that a TPU issue, or is that a city issue, or is that a sound transit issue? So it becomes a, that's part of why we were gifted the property originally. And so that's, so we're kind of a nexus of problems that aren't really related to missions, as much as related to jurisdiction and how that's going to be enforced.
So you're looking at that essentially public properties that don't have a mechanism to not become attractive for camping that tend to attract that.
Yeah, I can tell you both from this and looking to me first, trying to find the ideal property is never going to happen. But you'd like to find something where there's somewhat close to transit, where there's a situation where the community would say, yes, we accept or allow this, you know, I'm not going to say, we're going to put it next to you. You don't probably want to do it next to an elementary school or something, but but for the most part, I think we've consistently been a good neighbor. And so I think that helps with our engagement and our track record in trying to cite something.
You mentioned the capital cost of doing the new construction. How are you going to handle additional operational costs?
So the beauty of this project is we already have all the operation costs pretty much built into what we do. So we were already serving that many people, we're already serving this many meals, we're already doing all that stuff. So the beauty in selling this is this is basically a one-time investment in our community to increase our capacity, but all of the infrastructure is already there. We already have job, staff, staff, we already have a recovery program, we already have case managers and social workers, so the, there will probably be a marginal increase of staffing, but not a significant operation increase that I anticipate being any challenge for what we're doing right now. So that makes that one a real, that's part of why that's our top priority, let's go in and do this, we can make a big long-term impact. And I don't have the, where do you come up with an extra? For example, Community First Village, a whole nother project, 300-some units, the ongoing operating cost might be $3 million a year plus. Okay, where's that going to come from? So that's a deeper question. So Heather kind of queued this up for me, but here's some photos from Community First Village of the, I like how she says 80s, it's not tiny home, the way you think of the tiny home village you might see here in Tacoma, these are actually designed, different tiny homes. You want it to be someone's actual home, this is where you're going to live until you die, most likely. So dignified housing, permanent housing, it's not necessarily choice vouchers housing level, but it is a permanent, safe housing community for someone to live in. And so here's some of the county stats on 1,600 chronically homeless, the people who've been out for a long time. And the stat I have is make about 20% of the residents, even in our shelter, that are coming in and out. So part of what I'd like to do is free up space in our shelter where people who've been in here for a long time are able to move out and free up space for where we're our most effective with our shelter are the people who are not the chronically homeless, who were really helping move into that permanent housing model or addiction recovery and get that support that we need. So it is a master plan community. And here's just some stats I have on, sorry, I really would have loved to get this to you earlier. But to build a community where units are arranged in small neighborhoods, the thing about this model, and we had a Michael Mirror from the Housing Authority came down and his biggest question was, can you do this in a dignified way where you're not ending up repeating the the problems of the past that we learned from big housing projects in New York and Chicago? Where it's like, no, and he came down, looked at us and said, okay, no, this is actually a beautiful, you've heard Mike probably talk, it's a beautiful space. It's dignified, you're able to do this in a way that it creates a community that becomes self-perpetuating. That's really the goal. It's a high standard to get to, but it's to say, okay, we really want to come up with something, and it does take some economy of scale. Because you need to have enough people to have, then the healthcare, we've been talking to mental health providers, et cetera, to say, we'll come and help provide services when you get to that over 200 people, because it's worth it to us to do that. Where there's a choice of high-quality housing, where there's, they do their own farming, they do multiple micro enterprise. And this is again where part of the reason the rescue mission is looking at this so hard is we have thousands of volunteers that come through the rescue mission currently. I would be really shocked if you haven't either been there or had a family member that's been served at the rescue mission as a volunteer. It's part of us being around for 100, 100-plus years. So we have, I think that gives us a possibility, okay, we could leverage that and have volunteers come in, same reason we're able to offer two different kitchens, serving meals every day of the year, three meals a day, with only four cooks, because we have all these volunteers come in, would be why I think something like this could happen. And say, okay, again, leveraging the community, come in and really support something. I'm going to skip the video, you guys can look at that later if anyone wants to. You'll have access, there's a, I embedded a Community First video, which you could go to their website and see someone talking about testimony of someone who's lived in that village. It allows more, we were debating that here, so in Texas, where you can get 50 to 150 acres and do something, why would you build up? Here, it's like, we may have to have some shared walls or space to get the density we want. But at the same time, we want people to feel like you have your space, is a big part of that dignity. And so we're wrestling with that in our concepts, what we're looking at. Yeah, but I think that building up, well, we're just going to go 12 stories up and have it be a big apartment is hard. And I've been part of affordable housing development and even doing internal hallways and big spaces of not affordable housing where you're 80% AMI, but when you're talking about under, like 40% AMI, people that are paying less than $1,000 a month, it can lead to more issues, so trying to be prepared for that and create that space. We talk about it in the mission, in our shelter, we talk about friction points. So people can get along really well, but if I'm running into you, like, so I said that 10 bathrooms, or 10, five and five, if I'm waiting to go and I need to go and someone bumps into me or is, tries to get in line, like, that's where you accomplish, that's where you get friction points. And so if we can create a little more space, then you don't have that issue nearly as much and people, okay, I just can do my own thing, get in and out. So that's what we're very aware of when we're thinking about shelter space. Shelter Plus, so this is just a concept that I'm putting out there. Originally, if you're familiar with Tacoma and the stability site that they created, they had a big encampment, they moved people out of the encampment into a safe encampment, and then they moved that safe encampment into a stability site. And then the idea was there's going to be a third site for people that are doing well in the stability site to launch, to get into, to then get into permanent housing. Money kind of ran out, this is a short edited version, money kind of ran out, we just, they ended up with a stability site. Well, the stability site's kind of become permanent housing for some people. Like, hey, we're in a big tent, we're in a safe spot, we're here. And I'm trying to look at things and say, if we were to do, if the rescue mission was to do a tiny home village or a micro shelter site or something else, could we do it in a way where it's for those individuals who are in our shelter, who are doing well? To have the carrot to move on to, now you can move into your own small space, have that ownership because you now have a job and you went and served. We have people that come to us and will say, okay, great, we'll bus you down to Vancouver, Washington, spend three weeks in jail because you need to clear this up. We'll give you the bus fare to come back and stay with us, and then we'll, next step, how do we help you keep going? And so, or, I mean, if you have family there, stay there, that's great, but if you don't, come back here and we'll keep helping you, but for those people who are working, who are showing progress, it's still really hard to make that jump to, there aren't enough vouchers and I can't get first and last month's rent and I don't have a rental history and I'm just not going to be a good tenant for anyone right now. So something where we can help people get into that, there's a big gap there to close that gap for people. So that's what we're looking at as a concept for that shelter plus going deeper with people, not just emergency front-end, but creating more flow through our emergency shelter into the long-term permanent housing, which is our goal. And that's the end of my presentation, I didn't have a nice ending slide. You can, you can call me or email me, ask me questions, and I'm available just for a little feedback now, even if you want to, so. But I know I'm over time.
Well, we appreciate it, might be good some data, come down and do a tour, help serve meals or something just to get a sense.
Be fantastic for the program, so we are running short on time, so I think what we're going to do is break real quick, five minutes,
utility break, whatever you want to call it, grab lunches, come back, and then Miss Spear is going to tee up the next program, which will be, I think, an audiovisual.
We have a remote presentation by Andrew Dyke from Eagle Northwest about the gap analysis that was conducted for the county council on the homeless system in the county.
Great, so let's take seven minutes, come back, no later than 12:10. Did you have some? Good. Oh, wow. That's well done.
The presentation today will not be as long as it was for the council.
Yeah, yeah, great. All right, so let's take a few minutes, grab your lunch and come on back.
Seven packs of two greens, two yellows.
Yeah, thank you, yes, thank you.
Thank you very much, Brianna.
No, what we've been talking about for countywide numbers as well as the city numbers, don't include anybody on base. It's just within the municipal, you can't include them. Yeah, yeah, sure. Yeah.
I mean, as a panel?
Yeah, you want me to have him turn it on?
Yeah, we just do a test.
Andrew, this is Brianna Schumacher, we just wanted to do an audio/video test here, do you have a minute?
Great, sure.
Wonderful, thank you.
And do you want me to try to show my slides at this point, or?
I've actually got him here unless he wants to do it.
Would you like to control those yourself, or would you like Miss Spear to advance those for you?
Yeah, I'm happy to do it.
Thank you.
A little easier.
If you'd like to test now. Like the test now. It'll just be a few more minutes, Andrew. Thank you for your patience.
Great, sure.
It'll be an exercise for later. No, not yet, not yet. No, that's, it's. All right, we're gonna go ahead and begin again. Uh, we have a virtual guest now. I'm gonna about make the presentation regarding. The Pierce County homelessness services assessment that was originally prepared. Uh, commissioned by the county council's performance audit committee and it was recently presented to that committee. And now we have it as a very timely source of information for the city council here. So Andrew Dyke is on the line, ready to get started. Andrew, uh, we have the people back at the desk. So if you wanna go ahead, we're ready for you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Yeah, and send my regrets for not being able to be there in person. I'd, I'd much rather be talking to you live than seeing the, the tiny people in the corner of my screen, but um. So yes, this is going to be a fairly quick overview of some work we recently completed um, for the, the Pierce County, uh, for Pierce County. Uh, it's a fairly hefty report. My understanding is that the full report will be published by the county next week. Um, so I'd encourage you to look at that. There's a lot more in there than I'll be able to cover today. In, in these thirty minutes here, but I do wanna give you a sense, a sense of what we covered and I'm happy to take questions as we move through. Um, so, so feel free to interrupt. Um, so just a quick minute on, on the purpose. Um, as was just mentioned, this was requested by the, the county's performance audit committee. Um, and the main goals were to assess the need for and costs of ensuring adequate uh, shelter for everyone experiencing homelessness. Uh, create an inventory of funding sources and uses of resources dedicated to ending homelessness in the county. Uh, to give a, a bigger, more global picture of the resources going into the homelessness system than just available um, from individual agencies or their budgets. Um, and I'll talk about how we did that in, in a few slides here. Um, also, in addition to that sort of more traditional financial picture. Um, try to attempt to estimate the indirect expenditures and economic costs. Of homelessness. And these are things that are not paying for services through the formal homelessness system, but costs imposed on. Whether it's public agencies or other individuals in the county um, by homeless individuals. And then finally to assess the gaps in existing services. And we took that charge and boiled it down into a number of different questions uh, that we'll kind of work through as, in this presentation. Um, one is sort of a look at the number of individuals experiencing homelessness in the county. Um, and the report talks a bit about different counting methods and the strengths and weaknesses therein. We asked the question, what characterizes inflows to and exits from homelessness? Um, sort of what, what drives people into homelessness? Um, what were their characteristics once they entered the system? And we'll see how that plays out. Um, they, we decided to conduct sort of a literature review of programs and services that are used and look at what the research says about how effective, say, emergency shelters are versus. Permanent supportive housing versus other interventions in, in terms of promoting long-term stable housing. Also, what macroeconomic influences affect homelessness and how do these affect programming? Uh, we'll talk about that a fair amount. And related to that financial analysis, analysis, how much is Pierce County spending to resolve homelessness? That's the formal system. And where should the county prioritize its investments going forward? It's the first, just quick look at, put some context on the, the Pierce County's homeless population. Um, the bottom line with this picture is that the county has a disproportionate share of the country's homelessness. If you look at number of homeless people relative to the population. We see that the share, that ratio is higher in Pierce County than it is for the country as a whole. That's pretty similar to what you see in a lot of other uh, west coast communities. West coast communities, it's not as bad in Pierce County as in some other, other cities, but still um, above sort of the national average in terms of prevalence of. Homeless population. That's the second bar from the bottom, unsheltered population, third bar. Even bigger jump in terms of the share of chronically homeless relative to the, the general population. And finally, the unsheltered chronic homeless population in Pierce County is also bigger um, than you would expect based on its share of the population. These data come from the point in time count. Um, many of you are probably aware of this. This is a program coordinated at the federal level. Uh, it's been conducted on a single night in January for the, since two thousand five or so. Um, and it provides some useful information to provide these kind of comparative statistics to track homelessness over time. But there are some significant weaknesses to those, um, to the point in time count as well. County methods are not similar across, not necessarily the same across different regions. And they do change over time. So any of these comparisons need to be taken with a little bit of a grain of salt. And that, that plays out here when we compare point in time, that's the PIT or the light blue bars, point in time count. Versus uh, what we view as a more robust and comprehensive picture of the homeless population during a given year. That we derive from the homelessness management information system, basically a client database that contains all the information on. People flowing into the system, the services they're using, and the, the characteristics of those, those individuals and their outcomes as they exit the system. What you can see from the chart is a, a couple of things. Um, one's sort of the relative, relative prevalence of different characteristics. I wanna focus first though on the second bar where we see households with children. If we were to rely on the point in time count. Uh, we would assume that a very small share of homeless households had children. Um, but if you take the broader view provided by the H M I S system. Um, it looks like, it's more like half of household, homeless households have children in them. And there's a pretty important policy decisions related to that difference. Other difference I wanna, I wanna focus on here is this people of color. The, the PIT and the H M I S um, counts give similar shares of people of color. That's. Anyone who's not a non Hispanic white individual. But we can drill down even further with um. With the H M I S system. This next slide compares the distribution of uh, the races and ethnicities that homeless individuals identify with. In the dark blue bars, that's the general population based on census data. The light blue bars are the homeless population, again, based on the H M I S data. And um, what you see is that people of color are overrepresented among the population by a factor of one point seven to one. Um, and this is even more striking, um, if, if we look at people who identify as black or African American. Hope black or African American homeless individuals um, are four times the share of the homeless population compared to their share of, of the general population. So one of the things we did not address in our report is dive into sort of systemic barriers or systemic racism or issues that systematically. Um, hinder the, the ability of, of people to provide for themselves or maintain stable housing. Um, but it's worth recognizing that the confluence of those factors in the housing market and systems of social support. And so on, play out pretty dramatically and lead to this, this kind of outcome um, in terms of the disproportionality. Last piece I'll say here. You will see that the share of Hispanics in the homeless population is very similar to what it is in the general population. By most accounts, that's probably not an accurate representation of the incidence of homelessness among Hispanic individuals. Um, this is a question we had hoped to look into as part of our research. Uh, we were not able to do that. Um, but it's an important question going forward. Is the incidence of homelessness amongst Hispanic individuals truly lower relative to other uh, communities of color? Or is there some barrier, um, lack of cultural competency or what have you that, that keeps Hispanic individuals out of the system? So a little, little look at homeless trends over time. These are H M I S based numbers. Um, you, you can see kind of the trend increasing since two thousand fifteen, increase of about. Nineteen percent over the five years to the pandemic. Um, there is a bit of a data anomaly between twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen. We were not able to investigate that. Um, we don't know if that's a, a true dip and then recovery or, or something else. These are estimates. Um, we're counting clients, but we still have to make some assumptions about who's homeless, literally homeless in a given, at a given point in time. Um, but a trend that shouldn't surprise anybody. Uh, we've seen a steady increase in homelessness, mostly steady um, over time. Okay, so with that context, um, wanna spend a few minutes here talking about flows in, flows into homelessness and think about the factors that drive people in, into the system. Um, and our perspective is that the most important uh, factor is the, our conditions in the housing market. Um, it's um, we've had longstanding um, underproduction of houses. The report has a nice map that shows you the relative. Underproduction of housing over the last decade or so in different counties in Washington. Um, Pierce County, um, if we count up household formation and household construction, home construction. Um, the number of households formed has far surpassed the number of, of houses um, being produced. That leads to rising rents. Declining vacancy rates over time, um, rents rising faster than incomes, um, with the predictable effect that we're seeing increasing inflows into homelessness as well. Um, that's not to say that behavioral factors are not important. Um, but our, our first assumption is that if you do not fix the housing market, you're not going to solve the homelessness problem. Um, there are a number of behavioral factors that do influence homelessness and can in fact tip people into homelessness. Things like substance use disorders. Uh, chronic illness and other diseases, mental health conditions and so on. Um, we see those as, considering those as most important, thinking about the service needs of people in homelessness because clearly. Uh, again, these factors can tip people into homelessness. Homelessness can exacerbate the impact of these barriers and challenges that, that people face. Um, and so it becomes a sort of policy and provider question of how can we best serve the people that are flowing in to the system. Just a couple of slides giving you some data on, on some of these pieces. Um, first with respect to the housing market, uh, G A government accountability office from, study from twenty twenty, uh, conducted an econometric analysis. They looked at a number of economic and demographic characteristics in communities of care across the country. They did not include Pierce, Pierce County in that. You can see Seattle just. Just up the, the coast a little bit. Um, but what they found was that in the upper right, a hundred dollar increase in rent resulted in a nine percent increase in the incidence of homelessness. In the continuum of care. If we look, we looked at Pierce County rents, um, and so if we use those numbers, that's essentially a one for one increase. If you increase. Rents by, median rents by one percent, you're gonna see an increase in um, homelessness of about one percent. Um, so that's, that's a pretty big impact. Secondly, just again, a little bit of data on behavioral characteristics um, in, in terms of homelessness. Um, this is from some studies that, or this is one example of studies that have been conducted increasingly across the country where. Uh, regions are developing screening tools that collect a lot of data on individuals and their homeless individuals and their characteristics. And then through a lot of analysis um, and statistics, come up with uh, predictive tools that can help. Um, providers and systems understand the likelihood that um, certain outcomes will happen. Within the context of, of a homelessness spell or beyond. Um, in a world of scarce resources, these tools can help triage individuals seeking help, can help drive decisions about. About which services to provide to which clients. And we see that as an important way to think about the potential behavioral uh, influences on homelessness. And um, service needs of individuals as they're experiencing homelessness. Um, so it's a very quick overview. I'll, I'll pause for just a second and see if there are any, um, any burning questions on any of that so far. Great. Um, so this, this is just a, a high level schematic picture that the, the county developed to illustrate Pierce County's homelessness system. It's a, a multi-step process. Uh, with a lot of complexity. Um, but again, this, this kind of picture will be very similar across the country. Uh, but useful as context for understanding um, a lot of what's in our report and some of the decisions regarding the system that need to be made. And just. Quick overview here, uh, as I'm sure most of you or all of you are aware. Uh, people enter the system through coordinated entry. Um, they may or may not be in a shelter at that point. But at that first point of contact, there's a creative conversation uh, where the caseworker helps to determine um, what the client, what the household really needs. Um, is it very short-term diversion help where it's a, a single payment or perhaps help with transportation? To avoid a, a household or an individual falling into homelessness? Or do they need something more? Do they need a referral to a, a project with a potentially longer waiting list? Such as rapid rehousing, uh, working to quickly get families with few barriers back into housing or permanent supportive housing. Uh, typically um, for chronically homeless individuals or other individuals otherwise with, with a lot of barriers to, to stable housing. Um, and the end point hopefully is to end the homelessness, homeless crisis. That doesn't always happen. Um, the various interventions have different success rates. Some of that's due to the characteristics of the clients they serve. Some of it's due to the nature of the programs themselves. And that's where the, the research comes in that we'll just touch on a, a little bit towards the end of the presentation. Um, so again, context for the system, here's a little bit more data. Um, this chart shows for different communities, mostly state, but we pulled out a few counties here. Um, the homeless population along the horizontal axis plotted against the shelter beds per thousand, ten thousand people. On the vertical line, uh, sorry, the, the vertical diagonal line, the, the diagonal line there, the shelter capacity equals the number of homeless people. You can see New York. And the upper right has a shelter system that would, should or could approximately house all of the estimated homelessness, homeless individuals in the city at, at a given point in time. As we heard from the prior, um. The, the prior presenter, that's not necessarily the desirable end result or a necessary end result. Simply building beds does not get people into shelters. There are climatic, climatic reasons for seeing some of these, you know, on the west coast, milder climate than in New York. Um, and so there might be policy and other reasons for having a less developed shelter system. Nonetheless, that's the context that Pierce County is operating. Nonetheless, that's the context that Pierce County is operating in, uh, that's a shelter system with too few beds to house the number of homeless people on the street. Um, the next few slides are from a series of focus groups that we conducted. Uh, we had two focus groups with individuals who had experienced homelessness and flowed through the homelessness system in Pierce County and hadn't had been successfully housed. We were not able to talk to, um, people with less successful trajectories. Um, that's something that would be interesting to do further on, obviously, but the, the people that we did talk to had useful input on the strengths and weaknesses of the system. We also had a focus group with providers and all of the, uh, focus group participants there had also experienced homelessness and so had seen the system from both sides. And, and just want to touch on some of the highlights of those focus groups. Um, one theme that came out very strongly was frustration, um, that it was only possible to get prevention assistance when there was a pending eviction. Um, you'll see this again in the next slide that, um, there was a perception that is seems fairly accurate, that, uh, problems need to rise to a crisis level before, uh, before help, help is received. And that's not necessarily ideal from the perspective of, of the individuals. Um, the participants stress the importance of relationship with caseworkers. This was not terribly surprising to us, but helpful to hear it confirmed and elaborated upon by the, the focus group participants. It's important to have someone that knows the system and can effectively help you navigate through the system. Um, again, we did not talk to people who did not have a successful, uh, experience with the system. So we can't really quantify in this context, the importance of a good versus a less good caseworker. But a good caseworker clearly helps. From the caseworker side, from the provider's side, um, they noted, this is not too surprising probably, but the higher wages, lower case loads and more flexibility, uh, to help clients would help make their jobs easier. Um, they cited high turnover amongst caseworkers, caseworkers that are facing a lot of stress, both in the job and in the housing market, uh, because the wages are not as high. Um, that was, that was a key thing there. Um, again, sort of thinking about that sort of crisis aspect or all or nothing, um, characteristic of the homelessness system. And this is not unique to Pierce County, clearly. Um, there are a lot of rules in place federally, state and, and locally that, that lead to this. But you have to have a significant problem before you get supports. And then, um, by all reports, once they were in the system, they reported having help with the most of the needs that they had. And noted the, and second bullet here noted the benefits of getting there. They felt like it was winning the lottery, so to speak. On the other end, the back end of, of the system as clients are about to exit, uh, multiple times we heard clients noting concerns about benefits cliff where there's either a strict time limit on benefits or a strict income threshold. And as they approached either or both, um, clients reported stress, concern, all kinds of things that are certainly not helpful for, for, for functioning in, in the world. Um, this plays into one of our recommendations further on. So, and you heard some references to these kinds of issues in the presentation as well. I won't dwell here, but there were a lot of barriers identified by the focus groups that made shelters either a challenge to enter or undesirable to enter, things like not being allowed to have pets, having more children than were allowed, uh, having rules that seem too strict to the clients, um, and so on. So a lot, a lot of good input from the focus groups. And again, there's, there's much more in the, in the full report there. Another big component of what we did here was the financial analysis. Uh, we took a look from two perspectives. One first was the indirect costs of homelessness and either again are costs not of things like emergency shelters or permanent supportive housing, but the costs imposed on, um, either public sector agencies or businesses, um, as a result of people being homeless. And I will say, um, the research, there's some good research out there, but it's a very difficult research project. It's hard to count, hard enough to count the homeless population, let alone understand their, um, service use outside of the homelessness system. Um, but we tried, did our best to sort of cut pair down that research, consolidate it. And in the next slide, we'll come up with an estimate of the total indirect costs of homelessness in, in Pierce County. And we break those down into three components. Um, by all accounts, the largest share of indirect cost is healthcare, a little over half by most estimates of the total costs examined. Uh, things like emergency room visits of homeless individuals, uh, detox, substance use disorder treatment, uh, things of this nature. Uh, next category is justice system costs, thirty-four percent, just about a third. These are things like, um, we're including police patrol activity, um, all the way to court costs and incarceration costs for people committing crimes. And then finally, third category, social service systems, about thirteen percent of the total. Um, these are things like foster care costs for children of, of homeless individuals and so on. The one, one component we're not representing here is other economic costs to businesses. Um, there can be lost productivity associated with a lot of homeless people on the streets. There can be reduced customer traffic, um, more broadly, there might be reduction in tourism if there's a perception or actual, uh, sort of context where people feel less safe because of homelessness. Um, those are very difficult costs to quantify. We did not, and very little research on those costs specifically, so we did not include those here, but they are real and they all are all out there. What we found, what we concluded in our report based on the research we had was that per household, we see an average of between nine thousand and sixteen thousand dollars in cost, um, imposed. But these costs are not distributed equally across all homeless individuals, as you can see on the left. Um, again, a very, very wide variation in estimates, but the cost of chronically homeless individuals can be much, much higher. By one estimate, um, the top, the five percent of most expensive homeless individuals account for almost half of the total indirect costs imposed, which is pretty staggering. Uh, um, so again, we take those numbers and we boiled it down to a couple of estimates based on a couple of studies and came up with an estimate for the total indirect costs imposed on Pierce County. The low end, that was seventy-nine million dollars, on the high end, a hundred and thirty-seven million dollars. Um, despite that wide range, by all accounts, this is a large number compared to the resources devoted to ending homelessness. Um, one more comment on that. Um, simply ending homelessness does not reduce these costs to zero. As mentioned, uh, a lot of homeless individuals have other co-occurring disorders or issues or barriers. And those don't all go away just because they have a house, they're likely reduced. And it's important to look to the research to understand how much, um, different types of housing can help reduce these costs. This chart here shows our, um, accounting of total funds going into the homelessness system to serve individuals. Um, what we did was, uh, collect information from the county. Uh, we talked to the largest cities, um, in, in the county, uh, Puyallup and Tacoma and their housing agencies. We talked to some of the largest providers in the, to get a comprehensive overview of the total funds going into the system. And you can see how that played out here. Um, this is total and ongoing spending. The dark blue bars are total spending. Um, there's a lot of ARPA and CARES Act money in there, most of that in prevention. Think choice vouchers and, and things of this nature. So a large increase in funding in, in the most recent year or two, um, that was, and, and prevention, you can see accounts for eighty percent of the total, uh, much higher in, in two thousand twenty-one than in other years. Um, and the rest, um, sort of the funding sources flowed down from there. The local sources include, uh, local government general fund as well as the document recording fee, which is the biggest, biggest component of that. Uh, some state funds and then private donations. Um, it's not easy to count up the private donations, philanthropic donations and so on flowing into the system. We suspect our number that eight hundred and four thousand understates the truth, but it's important to recognize that, that those, those monies are there. Um, one other perspective, uh, this chart shows you the distribution of, uh, services of money across services and you can see in terms of where, and this excludes prevention. So that those big bars are taken out, so we can just look at sort of the, the services providing, providing the traditional homeless services. And there you can see that the biggest recipients of, um, the ongoing spending, again, mostly CARES and ARPA, uh, the rapid rehousing services and emergency shelters. I'm going to move on here in the interest of time. Um, so what we did next, and this is the, the bottom line in our gap analysis, there's a little bit more information elaboration in the report, but was combining current, look at current funding level and the current portfolio of services. Um, look at the flow of homelessness into, uh, into the system over the past few years, project that out uh, under a number of assumptions into the future and estimate the amount of resources that would be needed uh, to provide the current portfolio of services to every individual experiencing homelessness in the system. Um, and you can see that that doing so would require a vast, large infusion of, of funds. Um, in two thousand twenty-one, um, the number, amount of resources would almost have to double. Um, that rises quite rapidly through two thousand twenty-five. One, one note here is that the additional resources do include some additional vouchers and those are long-term expensive interventions that do work. Uh, but so those sort of accumulate over time. Um, the, the blue dollars, thirty-eight million does not include any prevention, but it's a useful benchmark, um, for the analysis. Uh, so the final set of slides here are just our recommendations to the county. And then I'll end with, uh, sort of a framework we developed to help, help the county think about its current portfolio of services and interventions and, and how it might think about, um, expanding into more experimental or, or, uh, types of, um, interventions that are less common in the county at the moment. Um, so we've talked about most of this already, uh, but our situational assessment, basically the housing market is broken. Uh, you got to fix that, uh, to solve the problem, to reduce the flow of homelessness into the system. The clearest evidence-based intervention is choice vouchers, long-term rental assistance. Rigorous evidence has shown that that works, that can reduce, um, reduce homelessness and, and reduce, uh, falling back into homelessness, but it's expensive. And in a tight housing market, it's not very effective. Um, if there's no place, no housing available, a voucher doesn't do you anything. Um, there's a sort of mixed message on short-term vouchers and permanent supportive housing. Um, and then again, Pierce County has an undeveloped emergency shelter infrastructure. There's not enough emergency shelter beds by many accounts. Um, but there are different options and no clear guidance on, on how to expand that effectively. Terms of our recommendations. First, um, we're recommending exploring alternative uses for available voucher resources. Um, I, I mentioned that there are, um, disappointing evidence on short-term vouchers. Um, one hypothesis is that short-term vouchers have not been shown to be effective in part because the clients that were given short-term vouchers were not triaged appropriately. And there is ongoing work to look into whether, um, short-term vouchers focused on individuals with fewer risks of subsequent homelessness might be more effective than, than some of the programs that have been implemented so far. Uh, we recommend experimenting with additional triage along those lines and perhaps in other interventions. Uh, which requires number two, better analytics and that the, the county has a, a good team and a good data system. There are always ways to improve, um, outcomes with constrained resources. Um, more data analysis can help with that. Um, linking H M I S data to data from other agencies to better quantify the homeless population. We know through a recent King County study that there are a lot of homeless individuals that just don't touch the H M I S system or the formal homeless system. And, um, linking these data sources could help account those people as well as provide a better understanding of the service needs of people who either already are in the system or are newly identified by the system through these data matches. Um, and then doing additional research and implementing of best practices can also help. Finally, for this slide, we have a few more, um, expanding sanctioned shelter infrastructure. Um, conventional concrete shelters are one option. There are outdoor alternatives that in many, are many cases are going to be less expensive um, and potentially more transitory, which can be helpful if we need to deal with a rapidly growing homeless population that will ultimately decline either through policy or, or other means, um, because of better housing, housing outcomes and so on. Um, safe parking, motel conversions referenced in the, the prior presentation and so on. Finally, another recommendation here is to manage unsanctioned encampments systematically. They happen, we know they happen, and there are true costs imposed by unsanctioned encampments, cleanup costs, enforcement costs and so on. We suggest recognizing these costs as a formal budget, uh, and tracking activities at, at these sites. Not to say that it's desirable to have them, but to recognize that they're there. And if we're not implementing, uh, interventions to reduce those encampments, we are, the cities, the county is incurring those costs of cleanup and formally recognize that helps with both transparency and a better evaluation of trade-offs amongst system strategies. Um, referring back to the focus group finding, um, we recommend using flexible funds to soften some of the benefits cliffs. Again, to reduce, uh, stress on clients who are facing either time limited or strictly income limited services. Um, and a glide path can help with that, um, through the use of, of flexible funds can help soften the blow and increase the connection of caseworkers with clients after they exit the programs with the, the strict cutoffs. Um, similarly, um, if possible, using flexible funds to encourage better caseworker conditions, less burnout, better turnover, should improve client caseworker relations. And we saw how important that was in a prior slide. Then finally, um, just wanted to close here with, um, our, our framework for thinking about the portfolio of services. Won't have time to get into the nitty gritty of all of these pieces here. Um, but what we wanted to do here was layout, um, on the left, you can see the different interventions. Many of them are sort of in the traditional homeless system. Some of them are new to the county, more experimental. And we tried to identify, um, for each of those, um, each of those interventions where they fell on a number of different characteristics, um, as a way to think about, um, I think about which ones are, are more helpful or less helpful. Uh, so to say a few more words and then, um, maybe I have a few minutes for questions or maybe I don't, um, but we'll, we'll just take that approach. So you can see, um, it's important to think about what the intervention is designed to serve. Is it for primarily for chronically homeless individuals? Is it for episodic people, people who are episodically homeless, homeless? Um, is it designed to be temporary or more permanent? Um, and the interpretation of some of the other characteristics will differ depending on whether we're thinking it's a, we have a temporary solution like an emergency shelter that is designed to help with emergencies versus permanent supportive housing, which is designed as a long-term permanent solution. It's important to think about cost effectiveness, both just in number of dollars. Uh, emergency shelters are relatively expensive compared to safe parking in RV parks. That's a clear budget implication, but perhaps even more important, um, important to have, to look to any evidence there is that the, um, intervention actually helps people exit homelessness um, over, over a long term. And here, the evidence base is fairly thin for most of the interventions. A no does not necessarily mean the service does not work. In some cases, it just means that the study has not been done. In other cases, it means that maybe it does not recruit, uh, if, even if there is evidence that it does not decrease evident homelessness over a long period of time. Um, it may, it does not mean that it is not useful. Um, an emergency shelter, for example, there is some evidence that it does not significantly impact long-term housing stability, but clearly still provides an important resource for people in crisis. So again, you have to think about the combination of factors as you're moving across the list. Um, it's important to think about scalability, um, don't want to dwell there. In terms of the housing market, which, I guess, I don't need to say it again, but I will. We are an incredibly tight housing market, no immediate term hope that that's going to change right away. Um, if, uh, doing more of something like emergency shelters or transitional housing requires, um, or well, those aren't the ones, if a, a solution requires vacant market vacancy, it's probably not a good option for a significant expansion in the near term. Um, does it require a site? That's obviously important for development, um, and important then to think also about, uh, development costs and timeframe in terms of the homeless population we're trying to reach in anticipation for different amounts of homelessness over the future. Um, and then finally, operating costs. Um, so there's, there's a lot behind each of these. Um, again, don't have time to get into all the details, but, um, see this as a useful framework for thinking about the possible portfolio going forward where you have a number of, a few tested interventions, a few, um, more, more traditional interventions that may or may not reduce long-term homelessness, but do have an important role to play. And a number of, um, sort of experimental or new interventions that are relatively inexpensive and could potentially serve a lot of individuals, but would require monitoring over time to make sure they're performing adequately. Um, and so that is the end of the show and happy to take questions.
I had a question on one of the slides, one or two slides prior to the last one. If you can go back, showed the graph of the increasing costs. Like that one there, so. If I understand this correctly, there's this dramatic increase in the cost.
Yeah, so, yes, exactly. So, so what that is, um, is that's primarily driven by, um, by voucher, increase in vouchers and increase in permanent supportive housing. Both of those are designed to be permanent and long-term. And so those, you, you know, the more people you serve with those, the more your costs are, are going to increase. Um, there, there will be some increase in the homeless population, um, to the extent that the housing market conditions do not, um, are not alleviated, but the, the primary driver there is the, the, the more permanent solutions.
Okay, not necessarily the increase in, in homelessness.
Correct.
For year, for year over year, right?
Yep. Yeah, and so, so this is based on, I, again, uh, looking at the flows and, um, and assumed. and, and assumed sort of distribution of need for different types of services, permanent supportive housing, rapid rehousing, and so on. And that, but the assumption being that we're going to serve everybody. And so that, again, those long-term, long-term programs are, are just going to have mounting costs. And I think this is sort of a benchmark. This assumes the current distribution of services and is maybe a high watermark, because again, there are some potentially lower-cost interventions that are not, not proven, but could reduce the, the costs to some extent, except that those long-term solutions are expensive.
Yeah, on, on that same chart. So to kind of two questions. One, the first one is, isn't, is that reflective of the fact that permanent supportive housing is kind of a one-way in, no one out? Once you've got, got housing, you have a hundred percent success rate or very close to that, but the cost escalates every year as more people come in?
Yes. Now, I mean, some, some people do exit. And we have a slide or a, a chart in the report that shows that the success of those exits ultimately is not as good because by design, you know, it's, these are people that have a lot of barriers, a lot of challenges, and need those certain supports permanently. So we're not, also not capturing those exits here, but you know, if someone's exiting, we're assuming they need services, and so they should not have in the context of this, this protection.
Second question on that is, you talked about this being a high watermark. Is there a component in this formula that accounts for the generosity of these programs attracting more people in addition to the present need?
It's sort of, we know it's out there, so we're going to sort of come out of the woodwork and access services.
I'd rather be in Pierce County than in Richland because I can get a voucher in Pierce County and I can't get a voucher in Richland.
Sure, right. Well, this, so this is, no, it does not. It's based on, again, looking sort of at, at recent trends and the flows into the system and what works out to about six hundred new households per month and, and not adjusting for that possible effect. So high watermark based on, on that specific assumption.
And where does the data, and I'll get to Mr. Branson in a minute. Where does the data reflect the investment in the needed services or app-around services to get people off of maybe the behaviors that are creating or participating in getting someone to the, the point of homelessness, like drug treatment, mental health, et cetera?
Right. So it, it does not account for upstream. I'm sort of, you know, prevention in the sense of if we were to treat everybody with a substance use disorder, some of them would have become homelessness, homeless, but they're not going to. So we don't have that in here. That, that would be another way to reduce, potentially to reduce the cost, although treating everybody with a substance use disorder is also very expensive. Once someone's entered the system, the, the cost of those services, to the extent that they're provided now, are, are built into, built into these cost estimates. That makes sense?
Maybe it makes sense. I'm not sure yet. Mr. Branson?
Yeah, I had a question regarding these estimates that, in, in that the county has embarked on a program that while it won't move homelessness to zero, it is intended to reduce the experience, numbers of folk experiencing homelessness over time. Is that built into this chart? To where these costs, even though they're going up, are to be serving fewer people each year?
Well, I, no. It's, it's based on relatively constant flow in, into the system with, and, and what's behind that is, again, an assumption that next few years, anyway, we're not likely to see a significant reduction in the, the tightness of, of the housing market. And that while there are other factors, substance use disorders, et cetera, that drive people into homelessness, by far the largest is, is the conditions of the housing market and taking recent experience as a not unlikely future in terms of people that coming into the system needing services. There, there are a lot of dynamics. This is not a model that captures all the dynamics that are out there. I, I think it's, it's mostly to show that under some assumptions based on recent conditions, if you want to serve everybody with the current portfolio of, of services, it, it's very expensive to do so. In some extent, that's a challenge. Let's do this better. There are ways potentially to rearrange a portfolio. As research emerges that certain programs don't work, it's, would make sense to shift resources to programs that have been proven to work for certain types of clients. And that's where you start to see, because they work. If they work, they reduce the, the people entering, coming back into homelessness.
Well, I think there was a chart previous to this that listed all the strategies and then certain characteristics or assessment of them.
This, this one?
Yes. So that, in, 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 interpreting this chart, that, and, and it's a group like ourselves trying to make some policy or investment decisions. Are the green boxes more important for us to pay attention to? Or like the cost-effective yeses or, and, and evidence that, that, that it works boxes? How, how, how does this chart useful to us in making policy decisions?
Right. Yeah, so the, the, the green boxes, with the exception of the solution type category, the, the green boxes are better in some sense than the red boxes. Solution type, I, I guess, is red, yellow, green, just as an indication of the length of time they're anticipated to be needed. But apart from that, like, like cost-effective, the yeses are, are generally less expensive interventions. And so that's better. You know, all is equal if you're comparing one to another. A yes there is better than a no. The world's more complicated, obviously, than, than yes or no. But, and I think this is helpful in, it might be allocating resources across a couple of, of, you know, if you're trying to think about the trade-offs between safe parking and tiny home villages. You know, you might compare those. Or for broader, you know, if you're the county, a, a full sort of portfolio review, should we be doing things very differently? And that's where you, you look at the amount of resources you're spending in each of the categories. And based on the, these boxes, think about what, what might be shifted around.
I, I guess, one, one line that surprised me at how it was not encouraging as a strategy was the ADU program line, because that is constantly pushed towards cities as, as a solution. So, but here it shows it's not cost-effective, doesn't have any evidence that it helps people enter homelessness, not real scalable.
Right.
But, but, but it was important enough for you to include it on this chart. So exactly how did you go about looking at an ADU program as a homelessness intervention?
Well, I mean, for, for one, they, they are out there. And Portland has some, had some code changes to encourage ADUs in, in part to address homelessness. So, so that they're out there. And I think it is important to, to understand the various boxes. And we have a little bit more in the report in, in places to look. But the issues with this one are the scale, whoops, sorry. Scalability is low. It, it's hard. You, you have to recruit people. They have to have an ADU. You have to reach agreements in terms of, you know, which clients are, are going to be allowed to, to stay in there and so on. The evidence, they're, they're, they're new programs also, so they, they have not been well-studied. No, does not mean that they don't work, but it means we just don't know. And so I think that's an example where if you're looking for something to do differently, you, you know, if, if you have something that's maybe, there's no evidence, but it's more scalable, and you have a, a crisis right now, ADU programs are not the place to go. You know, maybe, maybe a motel conversion, for example. And there are challenges there. Obviously, this is a multi-dimensional problem.
Okay, thank you.
But, yep, that makes sense.
Any other questions? So as I look at the intervention chart, there's kind of a sum there. Again, I'm thinking about the residents who will ask me, well, how, how does increasing housing supply necessarily address homelessness that is predominantly addiction or behavioral health-based? So what do we say to that?
Well, what, what the evidence shows is, is that, that conditions in our, the conditions in the housing market are quantitatively more important than, than those addiction issues and so on. It is true that you see much higher rates of addiction and, and other, other barriers in the homeless population. But that's not the same thing as saying that, that treating those factors are going to solve the homeless problem. One issue is with figuring out who is going to become homeless. There are many more people with a substance use disorder than it, than ever end up becoming homeless. So again, if you were to provide treatment services for everybody, that would help the homelessness problem. That's not going to solve it. But that's not a bad thing to do, but it's also a very expensive way to address a homeless problem that is driven primarily by, by the housing market.
What, what is the data shown, if you've looked at it from Seattle? It's anecdotally my impression that the Seattle and King County have thrown billions at the housing issue and have made an area dent in the homelessness problem.
Well, well, that's right. That's right. I mean, it's, and it's, it's not an easy problem. And fixing the housing market is, is not something that's, that cheap either. That's, that's where, you know, you're talking high-level policy. It's not solved overnight. There's more material in a report that talks, sort of quantifies the underproduction of housing. It's going to, even if we started now very intensively, it would take a long time to, to get the development on the ground to, you know, make that dent in the housing market. But ultimately, that's what has to happen.
All right. Well, thank you very much for your time today and presentation. We really appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Spear, back to you.
Yes, thank you. So a couple of things. I'm going to ask everyone that's on the council to please do something a little off the agenda. I would like you to please stand up. I would like you to please go to this door and just take one walking path around city council. Come back to that door. While you do it, please don't talk to each other and just let yourself take some deep outdoor breaths and ignore this for the thirty seconds it takes you to go around the city hall and then come back, if you wouldn't mind. Go outside, if you wouldn't mind, please. Just stand up. I just want you to walk around the building.
There you go.
Just walk around the building. But we're going to let you go in and out through these doors right here. That's correct. Take your time, but just don't talk to each other. Because it's a little chilly out there. Just anywhere you want to, just around the building. You're going to come back through these same doors, yes? Just around the building and then come back. Yes, please. They can do it. You can go. You're welcome to.
Is it? Scott? Well, we've solved homelessness. Yeah. We addressed it and solved it. It'll tell you out today. I gotta go mow the lawn still. I know, I put the muscular on there, but it hasn't done anything. I put mine out there and put lime on. That's a good idea. We feel bad, they're always talking about poisoning moths.
All right, everyone. Thank you for doing that. I was just wanting to try to give you a clear head as we do the rest of this day. That was that was waking up. I know, I should have put, I should have put a cash out there, a treasury cash. So the next thing I would like you to do again, before we engage in a group discussion is there's in front of you three cards. One says prevention, one says diversion, and one says intervention. And if you could please, just your own mind, in your own thoughts, not financially constrained, no limits. In each of those three things, it can be one that you write down, it could be 25, it could be zero. Each one of those categories, what do you think the city should think about or continue to do in each one of those categories? You can fill it up, you can say one word, you don't have to use all three, but within each of those categories, your own ideas, prevention, intervention, diversion. And this is not necessarily what the city does now. It might be, but it doesn't have to be. So if there's something else that you think the city should think about or something that should expand, all of that kind of stuff.
Definitionally, definitionally, with the shelter stuff, emergency shelter, be more diversion or intervention?
That would be intervention. Diversion is someone says, they call 211 or they call the city and they say, I'm about to lose my housing I have over the weekend and then I'm out. And they say, okay, rather than ending up in your car, we're going to try to get you, I see what you're saying there, but we're going to try to get you either into your cousin's house or get you into a hotel. But then the intervention, I would say, would be the Aspen Court model, where you've got somebody there for three to six months, for instance, and then moving on. So I know that there's kind of some blurred lines there. Couple more minutes and then we'll move on. Yes. Hands down when you're done, so we can tell. All right. So hang on to those. That'll come into the group discussion, but we're also going to collect them from you at the end. Staff will use those as reference points going forward. So I was going to suggest us dot exercise now, but I think we'll hold that to the very end. But I'll ask you now to go back to the very beginning when Mary Dodsworth gave you a scenario or a person or type of person that you would represent. Keep that in mind because that'll come back with the sticker exercise. Other than that, Mayor, I don't know how you want to facilitate. Would you like me to keep leading the conversation or it's exactly how you want to do it with Robert's rules? But the discussion now among you, based on the things you've heard today, based on your areas of expertise and lived experience, based on this chart, which unfortunately I know is small print, but the idea there of certain things have been shown so far to be more or less effective?
I think it might be kind of interesting to have a discussion about the cards and maybe have somebody put up on the whiteboard and go through each of the categories and get perspectives, and that might help form a dot exercise.
Sure.
You've got pretty handwriting.
Yes, her handwriting would definitely be better than mine.
The day goes on, so we'll see how we do.
So we'll, we'll start.
Yeah.
We'll start with prevention, since that was your first card. And I don't want to.
Why don't we just go around the room and have everybody kind of give out what they had on their cards and Heidi can throw it up on the chart and then we can chat about it. Make sure those are in the right categories and maybe express a little rationale behind not just the what you put down, but the why. Just Rand Stare, let you start. Just on prevention right now.
I wrote down utility assistance programs that I think that those are one of those things that are there. I would note that I didn't write down rental assistance because I don't think that that's really something that the city is going to be this, be the biggest player in, but to do that. The other thing that I wrote down is that we ought to look at ways to help with transitioning out of foster care. In that the school districts in that sees, you know, foster care as a, as an at risk of transitioning to homeless when you, the cliff is when you age out and they, and then depending upon the foster care provider that you have, you may just be shown the door or to do that.
Great. Ms. Bell?
Thank you. I mean, the obvious to me is we need to find ways to increase affordable housing. So that, to me, is a prevention. If it was there, then it would prevent possibly a lot of homelessness. And along the lines of the utility assistance, some sort of buyer assistance programs, not for financially, but more like a training assistance. It's overwhelming for people who have never been through the process. So that also plays into navigators, having those navigators out there to help guide people through. Maybe taking a look at the multifamily tax exemption program that we have. We don't have, it's more about the builder and them taking advantage of it. We don't have anything that would push someone to that, so I'm not quite sure how we would address that, but encouraging people to use that more. And then I heard a lot about barriers. So depending on what the barriers are, taking away those barriers, I heard that from Duke. He mentioned that, and so did Ms. Moss, that if those barriers weren't there, that provides people more opportunity to take advantage of the programs. Thank you.
Oh, I saw, I interpreted differently somewhat. On the intervention, I was looking at it as things we could do to improve, and I put down better paying jobs and more convenient transportation. That's what I put there.
Prevention, yes. Prevention, yeah.
And more convenient transportation.
And I just, I had regional investment in effective rental assistance. Now, there's some money out there, but there needs to be maybe a little bit of regional funding approach to it. I'm not sure it's as effective as it could be right now in terms of getting it out. And then I put continued emphasis on behavioral health and addiction treatment. As prevention. Behavioral health and addiction.
My first one is developing measurable processes. Developing measurable processes tied to outcomes so that we can see what's working. I'm still not convinced that we don't know what's working and what's not working. We do a lot, and I think we're kind of surprised because we don't tell that story very often. We talk about public works and parks and public safety, but we don't talk, we don't really talk about our human services work. We're doing a lot, but is it, is it working? Have we solved homelessness here? I don't know. Don't think so. My second one is better or different partnerships with schools. Because we have an invisible student and family homelessness issue. Better or different? Partnerships? Better or different partnerships with schools? Especially after today's presentation where they, you know, where the, even though you may have low barrier shelters, it's predominantly for men or for women, but not necessarily for families. And then I heard that people say, well, there really aren't families that are homeless, but we know families are homeless. So I have personal experience with families living in cars and couch surfing and basement surfing and all that sort of thing. So I, I don't know that we know the true extent, particularly here in Lakewood. And the last one is really taking a holistic view and doing a gap analysis for, for Lakewood. We, again, we do a lot, but where should our city dollars go? To address a point that Councilmember Anderson made earlier today, we can't solve this problem ourselves and we can't solve the problem by throwing money at all the categories. There, there's going to be a place for us, there's going to be a place for Lhasa, there's going to be a place for the county. What, what is our place? I think a little bit of research will go a long way.
Was it you?
So, I'm sorry. You could use your mic. People are having a hard time hearing you, sir.
So there were, one of the subsets is foster care kids. It's kind of getting, it is a critical stage in someone without a lot of family support and resources life. And they don't know anybody that's been to college. They don't know anybody that's been in the army. They don't know where to go to get the resources that may be available, how to apply for a job, that you can go down to Goodwill and get training to fill out a resume and, and have some initial employment experience. So I think the reason for that is I think we could actually do that.
So most of mine are already up there. Yeah, and I don't think you'll have a problem because I did put utility assistance on there, so it was just the same. And housing supply that Patty mentioned. I put housing rehab, which is something we do and which helps keep people in their homes. And so I looked at, so basically, when I stopped prevention, I saw, how do you keep people in their homes or where they're at? And so I did, I did put rental assistance, clearly too expensive, so some type of emergency rental assistance or something. And then I was intrigued by what Duke said about that they do counseling to help people understand how much housing they need or that they might be something too expensive already. Because I, I do worry that they, that a lot of folks just don't know. And in the situation that we're in now, there's just so little supply, people are just grasping, right? They're just grabbing onto anything. We need a place to live, we'll do this, and they make bad deals. So that's what I got.
So shifting from prevention to intervention. These are kind of the two ends of the spectrum. Diversion will do third. It's kind of in the middle and it's probably the most muddy, if you will, but starting with intervention. And how about if we go the opposite direction?
Thank you. And I think, I don't know what this is. So for intervention, I put, we, we need to continually actively encouraging people to move off the streets and give them the opportunity. and give them the opportunity to get off the streets like we currently do. And, and as hopefully more behavioral health things come online or substance abuse things come online, we can take care of those kind of things. If we get another hotel and we have a portion of that, maybe that will work. And then, and then I would just, we need to be in the mode of supporting the expansion of behavioral health and temporary housings for a lot of these folks.
Muddy, yeah.
There's no wrong answers yet, right?
No. I'll do the road line strikeout later. That's right.
Well, in the same line, continue a robust behavioral health contact team program and concurrently lobby for additional authority. The stick part of the carrot of the stick.
I was waiting for you to finish writing. Emergency shelter options in Lakewood. Particularly that focus on privacy and dignity.
Yeah, I likewise was interested in helping to fund shelter capacity, perhaps with the rescue mission as a regional resource.
So to clarify that, you mean not necessarily building a new structure in the city, but expanding or investing in the existing? Okay.
That was my thought. Perhaps using some ARPA funds for that.
Okay.
And then I had the behavioral health contact team continue emphasis on that. Mary?
Yeah, I had more shelter in Lakewood. And the multiple health behavior I also had.
I put down the supportive services. So if this is after it happens, some investment in whether it's the caseworkers, what we had seen up on there from, what was it, Eco Northwest? That one of their things that the providers want, that they wanted was that a lesser caseload, different wages, things like that, that would help them be more effective in supporting people after everything has happened.
Your microphone, please.
I go down support losses, expansion plans.
All right, so the third category is diversion. And again, this is the one that's a little trickier to explain or define, but essentially when it's happening. So when someone is in that, maybe I've never been homeless before, and this is coming up closely, or I have been, and I'm about to get into it again. But it's that point in time where maybe it's public or private interaction with this individual or this family to figure out how to keep them from truly becoming homeless, meaning you have no place to sleep overnight. So one of the things that I think, I'm not going to try to find it, but the emergency assistance, there's an emergency assistance program that the city does through CDVG and Home and the housing program. But I don't know if that's something you would want to expand or create a new program here in the city about this or just whatever your thoughts may be regarding diversion. This is your manager.
Just gonna, just to follow up as an example. For example, Mr. Gumm uses those funds, like when there's a fire, and we work with Red Cross to temporarily house them in, say, one of our local hotels or something along those lines. So that's just an example.
Another one would be somewhat similar to prevention in that it's handing someone $500 to cover this month's rent because they had their car breakdown. Next month, they're going to be okay again, but right now, they needed this extra bulk. So that kind of a thing, too. Any ideas?
This was one of those things that was sort of vague to me between this and, and the other two. But what I finally ended up putting down is to energize the faith-based community within Lakewood to be a part of the solution.
I'm just waiting for you to finish writing. I don't want to, like, overwhelm. Okay. Okay. I think taking away some of those barriers that we heard about that make it difficult. Like he said, people would come and they would have to turn them away because there was a certain policy or rule or something that was in effect that would be helpful to take a look at those barriers and what they were. And also, again, I'm going back to the caseworkers. So if you have more of an abundance of caseworkers who can take on than the cases, that would help people when it's happening. And I also liked taking a look at what you just said, the emergency assistance funds.
I definitely took it the different direction. I put down the lack of land to build out.
Can you elaborate that a little bit more, Councilmember Moss?
We have a shortage of land in Lakewood to expand our housing authorities, housing abilities.
Yeah, exactly.
She'll do that behind the scene.
My thought on diversion was to have a more effective navigator program. So there's a one-stop shop for people. Because if someone's experiencing issues with utility assistance or rent or whatever, I wouldn't know where that one stop to defer them to. I had that situation that came out this week where a woman had this guest at her home. She had become uninvited, but she wouldn't leave. And she knows that if we start this eviction process, this person's going to be homeless. And to whom do you turn, right? So I gave her some, what I thought were resources with the Pierce County Housing Assistance Program. But that's the kind of thing, education and support of a good navigator program with existing NGOs.
I want to check mark by everything that's already been said. But I focused on something similar to the emergency assistance. I called it financial gap assistance. And my, my definition of emergency is a minimum of six months of assistance. We were acquainted for a long period of time with a family at our daycare when my daughter was younger, and they were always on the brink of disaster. And at one point, a job loss, an addiction, and they were homeless. And they ended up at our basement for three months. And if there would have been a six-month period where, where the single mother didn't have to pay rent because it was really difficult for her to find anything other than a low-wage job, and she couldn't get the kids to school. And then one of them fell and broke their arm. And so it was always something. But she needed a long period of time where she didn't have to constantly go back with her hand out for this short bits and bobs. And so for me, it's a minimum of six months. And so I don't know. Yeah, just, just my personal experience.
Mine's enhancement of veterans and drug court program. It's diversion in a legal sense, but also it can, in the right cases, catch early and prevent a downward spiral. Going to jail can result in a job loss and eviction. Sometimes a family unit can be salvaged through that program instead of going down further road of addiction and jail. And so you have two units that would be homeless or saved with family unity. So I think it's got a lot of diversion opportunities.
Okay. That can be diversion if what you're doing is putting them there rather than on the street. All right. What I'm going to ask you to also do now is to find those four little smiley face stickers that were put in front of you. And you'll notice that two of them are yellow, two of them are green. And you'll also notice that on our pyramid over here, there are three spots, meaning prevention, diversion, and intervention. So this is a two-part exercise. And I don't all rush up there at once unless you are used to doing that and are comfortable doing that. The green dots are for that individual that you were asked to pretend to be at the beginning. So if you want to think about it from their perspective. And then you have two dots instead of three. And what you're going to do with those two green dots is put them where you think that individual with those needs would want you to spend your resources, people and money. The green just means that that is you, your, your scenario. The yellow's going to be you as a council member, your life, your perspective. Okay? So you may go up there and say both green dots need to go in prevention. You may say one of them needs to go in diversion, one in prevention, and nothing in intervention. It's purposely, you only are getting two when there's three here. Green one is your scenario. The yellow dots are you. So think why is yellow, why is you? Okay? That'll help with the colors. Yeah? Does that make sense?
Green is the scenario, the person we were given.
Yes. Yes. Yellow is you. So. If, you don't have to use all the dots. If you end up putting all four dots in the same place, that's okay. If yellow is the scenario, the, the individual you were described to think about at the beginning, their perspective, what would they say if they were here today as where you should be? I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Yes. Ah, yes. Yellow is you. Yellow is you. It's putting your hat on as the, of the hypothetical person you were asked to be. Okay, that's the green. Yes. Correct. If they were here providing public testimony and saying where you want the money to go, the yellow is for you and what you would say yourself. The green is that person.
Hopefully, they align.
It's not that deep.
The lawyers, it has to be deep. Words matter to us. You don't have six months to figure out. No continuance.
All right, and okay, I can say it was the two lawyers that were having a call.
so now you've had five hours of facts and figures put toward you. The information that came from your guests. You thought about it yourself, and you came up with your individual. This is what I think should go into each one of these. And then we tried this hypothetical. If you were that person, where do you think they would say put the money? And then also, your own opinions are up there. Mr. Mayor, I don't know if there's anything else you'd like to do today or if you want to start talking next steps. The intention today was to identify the what, not necessarily the how. So certainly, there's going to be follow-up. There's going to be significant follow-up. But is there anything else that you would like to have come out of today other than what we have here as your responses?
So Mayor, if I might suggest to the council for us to go back and take this information, collate it, and then bring it back to you. And in between there, I'm sure you folks will have some more ideas, some more suggestions you might want to pull together individually or even collectively. And then we go through some kind of a prioritization exercise based on this. You could do that as a part of our future study session. But my recommendation would be to maybe come back as part of another, you know, Saturday retreat, maybe in May or so. Just, I'll throw that out there. Or again, if you wanted to do it as part of your regular agendas as a study session. So that would be my recommendation. And if you don't mind, Mayor, if you'd allow us to use a little bit of discretion and kind of pull together some of the other ideas that you heard from some of the other presenters as well, and if we could. We won't mix that with what you folks have put up there, but to put that on the table so you have all of that as well and/or draw some clarification of what you've put up there and how maybe some of that could be brought forward.
It's consider a harder part of the assignment. Is there a way to tie those potential initiatives to available funding sources? You know, for example, the county's spending $10 million on this. We have $47,000 worth of CDVG funds that are eligible for this. You can't use any money that we have for this. I mean, those kind of things, so that we prioritize somewhat realistically.
So could we do that before you go through the prioritization process? Yes, I think it would be at a very, very broad level, though. No, okay, if we, I just want to manage expectations there.
Not, not real numbers.
Right, okay. Yeah. Funding sources. I can, we can focus, yeah. Funding sources, yes, yes. We can, absolutely, we can do that. Absolutely, yes. Because really, the short answer is yes, we can do that.
I just would, our next step, so I just would, my preference would be on a Saturday. I know that it takes up our weekends, but I just feel like if we come to a works, a work session, I'm just not as clear. So that, I just wanted, I mean, our, every other, yeah, the evening session.
Or nine to noon.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I would just say that as a part of our prioritization, and we talk mostly strategies here today, but that at some point, we need
today, but that at some point we need to talk about populations. You know, there are, there are, there is a range of homeless populations out there from the chronically homeless to folks that are having a short-term piece to do that, to do that. And in addition to prioritizing what to do, we need to prioritize who do we want to focus on? That's, that is part of the Lakewood population.
So what you were provided in your handouts for today were a number of full reports, some of which were referenced in the presentations to you. Some others were maybe cited as a link to go to, but that's all there for you electronically now. We will also get you the updated version of today's slides that include the guest presenter's slides as well. And so you're welcome to take a look at all of those at your leisure in preparation for next steps.
I want to put in a pitch for not meeting on a Saturday and, and dedicating one of our study sessions to just going through it. I mean, our study sessions are sometimes, a lot of times, three hours. And so if we are dedicated and focusing on it, that would, that I would make a pitch for that. I would also, I heard some intriguing things here today that I didn't know about. And the idea of there being, this whole idea of being regional. And, and if there are options out there, for example, didn't know that Tacoma Rescue Mission was in the middle of a proposed expansion, they serve people from Lakewood. It is an option for us to, to put money toward their expansion. What other options are out there that other jurisdictions are doing within our regional footprint that could help Lakewood? And so developing that matrix of, right, and, and this is part of what SHAPE is doing on the affordable housing scale, is they're pulling all of that stuff in so they can be a central hub. Who is the central hub? Is there a central hub? I'm not saying we need to be a central hub for Pierce County, but we should know what some options are for Lakewood. My last point is that there are ties to affordable housing and, and the housing market. For example, the work that Habitat for Humanity is doing at Boat, with the Boat Street Project that we have contributed to, that, that will be a moratorium for low-income families in perpetuity. And so those types of projects should be on our radar of things that we can do. This is, you know, not necessarily do we have to purchase land and, and build something or, or convince developers to come in and, and turn over a couple of their units. So what, what options do we have along those paths?
I was just going to say I'll, I'll follow up with Ms. Spear and we'll send out those presentations later this afternoon.
All right. Yes. Yeah, if I could, Mr. Mayor, there was a couple of applications they've actually submitted already to the city through the ARPA program and then also through the Home ARPA bucket. So between those two things, we can pull some information right away, but we can also do some follow-up with the executive director.
Lots of project behind the scenes. Jeff Gumm is very much involved with the director as far as potentials in the future. So that needs to be brought forward at some point when Lhasa's decided to make some decisions. But we continue to work with them on where they're going.
Last, last request is to please just leave your cards there so we can collect those as well. Otherwise, thank you all so much for your time today.